I'd like to call the order of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors Public Hearing for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So, the public hearing is for Resolution two thousand and twenty-two oh five, which is the Act five thirty-seven Facilities Plan Special Study for the Calderway and Atherton Street Sewer Main Replacement. This item was forwarded from the General Forum meeting that was held just a couple weeks ago. The State College Sewer Authority operates a collection-only authority with all sewage generated within State College Borough being transferred to the UAJA. The service area for the State College Sewer Authority includes only the area located within the borough and does not include the Pennsylvania State University grounds. Additionally, the borough operates under the two thousand and six Act five thirty-seven Regional Sewage Plan, which requires regional approval of any proposed amendments to that plan. The borough has identified areas of the Calderway Sewer Basin, Calderway Main Line, and Atherton Street Main Line that have significant growth potential due to associated municipal zoning. Historical peak flows during PSU events and/or storm events have been approaching the capacity limits within the main lines. As such, portions of the Calderway Sewer Basin have limited capacity to convey projected flows. There were some alternatives that the special study considered. The first was the Atherton Street and Calderway structural alternative. This option proposes replacement along West College Avenue from South Spark Street to Atherton Street, Atherton Street from West College Avenue to West Calderway, one block, and West Calderway from South Atherton Street to Borough Street. Approximately twenty-one hundred linear feet of eight-inch pipe would be replaced. The following pipe size alternatives were evaluated: eight-inch, which is the existing size, ten-inch, twelve-inch, fifteen-inch, and eighteen-inch. This evaluation determined that a twelve-inch replacement should be sufficient. The Calderway Sewer Main Replacement, this option proposes replacement along Calderway from Heister Street to High Street, then on High Street over to East College Avenue, then along the trunk line on East College Avenue up to University Drive. Approximately five thousand one hundred fifty linear feet of pipeline would be replaced. Following pipe sizes were evaluated, ranged between eighty-eight inches to twenty-four inches. The proposed upgrade alternative for the Calderway Sewer Conveyance Pipeline is to replace the existing sewer pipelines with new PVC pipes ranging in size from twelve to twenty-four inches. In general, most existing eight- and ten-inch pipes will be replaced with twelve-inch pipes; most twelve-inch and fifteen-inch pipes will be replaced with eighteen-inch pipes, and most eighteen-inch pipes will be replaced with twenty-four-inch pipes. Alternative two was the non-structural alternative. Under this alternative, planning processes would be adopted to limit development within this region. As described in Section four, regional development planning has prioritized maximizing the value of infrastructure through higher-density development in the existing areas to avoid a geographically sprawling system to serve low-density customers. This is a financially sound approach. The non-structural alternative to limit development in the downtown would only push development into surrounding sparse areas that have a higher cost per customer served. For this reason, the non-structural planning alternative is not recommended. And alternative three is the no-action alternative. The no-action alternative represents a situation in which the borough does not replace the existing sanitary sewer lines along Atherton Street and Calderway. The no-action alternative is not considered viable because of the surcharging that is predicted by the model under future growth conditions and the deteriorating condition of the existing clay pipelines. The no-action alternative is also not consistent with the West End Revitalization Plan's goal of improving infrastructure within the Atherton Street area. The alternatives are evaluated for multiple reasons, including cost and consistency with the regional comp plan. The chosen alternative for the special study is Calderway and Atherton Street. Sewer Main Replacement is alternate one.
All right. Oh, all right. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody either on Zoom or here in person that would like to speak on this topic?
No one has their hands up on Zoom.
No one in the room?
We'll talk about it in a regular.
Yeah, we'll get in a regular.
I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to our regularly scheduled meeting. And the first thing we're going to do on that one, which I probably should have done on this one, is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all rise with me, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. January third, public hearing, I'm sorry, three, January third, regular meeting, and the January twenty-sixth joint meeting with our ABC committees.
Motion to approve all three of those, sir.
I have a motion to approve all three.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion, changes, or additions to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to go to citizen comments. At this time, any members of the public are invited to comment on any items not on the agenda. Please try to hold your comments to a five-minute time limit. Comments relating to specific items on the agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. Do I have anybody in person or on Zoom that would like to make a citizen's comment?
Yes.
Yes, okay, go ahead, Danny.
I would like to offer thanks to the Military Museum for the fine job they've done in clearing the ice and stove from the walking path. I use it about every day, and it's a very popular place, so we need to extend thanks to them for doing what they can, even with the bad ice we had last week, so, good job.
Any others? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to new agenda items. These are items on the state recently passed Act sixty-five, which requires a posting of agenda twenty-four hours before a meeting of township website, and which only allows items to be added to an agenda vote after the Board of Supervisors. Does anybody, any of the members wish to add a new agenda item? Do we need to add any agenda items? What was I going to say? There was one that I didn't know if we need.
Are we going to vote on it?
Well, the one, yeah, the one on the.
Does it require spending money, or does it require?
Now, just calm down.
Well, I'm.
Yes, it does. It was the one that we had on here.
Oh, you can do that, I think, off of my.
We can do that off of here?
I think so, off the manager's report.
Okay, because I think it was the culvert was what I was thinking of. It was, do we need to?
Not the culvert, I think we're thinking of the pool shed.
Yeah, the pool shed, that was it. There was one thing on there that would require us to vote, and that was what I was asking.
I guess technically you can add it.
Well, if it requires spending money, we have to put that on the agenda.
That was the, that was the pool shed tear-down, I believe it was on.
If we're not voting, then.
So add that after the manager's.
All right, so we're going to add that, although I need a motion to add that.
Yeah.
I need a motion to add item one, item number one from the manager's report to our agenda. Do you move? Do I have a move motion? I have a second. Any objections or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to move that to the end of the, end of the agenda, so, okay. Next, okay, township business. Introduction of the two thousand and twenty-two Bollesburg Fire Company Officers, and I will invite Mr. Van Linder to come up and line his guys up. Then, I do want to make it, put it on the record that Van does not have shorts on tonight. I want that in the record, so.
It's almost cold enough for gloves.
You got a couple of good food out there. Now they get worse food out.
Oh, I got a picture of this crew.
Turns sideways.
No, y'all didn't have masks on last year.
I would like to tell Donnie.
Good evening. I'm Van Linder. I'm chief of the fire company. I'll let the other officers introduce themselves instead of me. Running on my own, I'm here.
Nate Dry, first Assistant Chief.
Eric Olner, second Assistant Chief.
Eric Harris, third Assistant.
Paul Robinson, fourth Assistant.
Bruce Wyatt, safety officer.
Amy Johnson, Fire Police Captain.
I provided all of the supervisors with the annual report. Numbers stayed pretty consistent. We were up on call volume, we were up on hours over the previous years. Any questions pertinent to the report?
What is our chief call?
Um, chief call would be like if we get dispatched out, like someone calls in nine one one, they just want an officer to show up to investigate something instead of having the whole fire company.
So you'd do that, that'd be you going.
Yeah, one person himself, what we just investigated, yes.
There's one.
Wow. Nothing.
We heard a comment on.
That's, I think it's Bruce in the background. It's not Bruce himself. Bruce, you might want to mute.
It's Jen.
I muted him, forget it.
Anyway, I got a question on, I looked at the automatic alarms, twenty-nine. Do we get any kind of compensation when you guys got to run out on automatic alarms? Or you get no compensation?
We have no compensation right now.
And I saw you had three of them in college township, too.
Yeah, again, no compensation. The only thing we would have is if, if it's habitual alarms, they have so many alarms in a certain time period, we'll give the terminal and send re-code, and they know how that affects us through the alarm system via the van, and, but we get no compensation back for that now.
Are the majority of those electrical issues or something like that, or failed batteries or?
Smoke, if an alarm goes off because they burp, there's something in the oven and the smoke come out. It is a whole wide range of what causes them.
Okay.
Accidental trips, you know.
Just thinking about it, it may be useful for people to read this. When you have the company number to.
Put the department.
Put the name behind it, because most people wouldn't know what company seven is.
Yeah, it'd be springmills and.
Yeah, but, you know.
Yeah, we could do that.
It just does add that to the list, so we know geographically.
Where the buildings are, yeah.
Where your domain covering, yeah. Thank you.
Within that, you'll see, you know, company fifteen was actually Port Matilda. Company five is Port, company five is the alphas, company four is Center Hall. That'd be, of course, the most common ones right close to us here. The biggest number is fifty-six, which is Balfont, and then Huntington County, which was Alexandra and McLevy's Ford.
And you had no calls with ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Uh, no, eleven, there is no ten. Eleven and twelve is actually fifty, included is number fifty-seven, and we had no calls, which is Filmsburg. Thirteen is Sandy Ridge. Although we have gone to Pine Glen, which is seventeen, which is way out there.
Where?
Yeah, but we have, you know, we have nothing in that. So, yeah, calls have stayed relatively close. That number, although we increased by twenty calls, that number went up only by nine.
Nigel, you have anything you want to ask?
I have an interesting question, unrelated to all this. I'll set it up. So, my wife teaches in-car driver's ed. She's downtown today with a driver's ed student driving on Beaver Avenue, stopped at the red light at Allen Street, and an Alpha Fire Truck was determined to get them to move, but that would have required the driver to, you know, the student driver to go through the red light, to make a right turn onto, there's a no-turn-on-red sign there, too. So, it, it would be, is that lea, you know, is it legal to move, you know, go past a red light to get out of the way of a fire truck?
Realistically, if the fire truck goes through a red light, they're taking all the liability on themselves.
Yeah, but they wanted, the fire truck was trying to push the car to go through the red light.
It's judgmental call. I, I'm not going to, I'm not an officer to say what's right. I just know what, I know being on the other side of the coin and having to try to force through intersections.
Yeah.
You try to get everyone just to yield enough to get through there.
Oh, yeah.
But it's a tough decision for the driver, how, where do I go? Do I get out of the way? How do I get out of the way? They might not be able to.
It didn't turn green.
Yeah, yeah, because the preemption device should have made the light turn green.
Well, that's interesting. It didn't right away. And the truck, I said the engine was honking extra, you know, like crazy, and it didn't turn green right away. And soon as it did, the student, you know, got out of, pulled, pulled across into the bus stop at school library to get out of the way.
It turned green usually a block, sometimes a block before the fire truck gets there.
Was there something going on there, then?
Do we have preemption on the temporary signal on Mary Elizabeth?
No, nobody did not.
Not until we get the regular signal back.
Do ambulances have preemption? Do you ever?
Ambulances are, ambulances can be on preemption device, but they're, they're a tier below the fire department. The fire department have priority.
There was an incident with an ambulance at the Cairo Warner Boulevard that I, I was thinking about the preemption as to whether it was.
Yeah, if they want, they would have, if they put it on, they would have one, one level underneath. We, we have priority, they would have secondary. And our, on part of the goals, we did, our new engine rescue has been delayed, probably looking to end of May till it shows up. We're getting equipment ordered off of that. You know, some of the new equipment we just got in, we're actually implementing on our current piece of equipment with the new thermal imaging cameras and stuff, so we're working into that, getting that in position, so when it comes in, hopefully in a month, month and a half, once we get it in here and get training on it, we should have it up and running. And the FEMA grant was submitted, they extended the grant into January. We had the female grant submitted for new SCBA's. Our SCBA's go out effective two thousand and twenty-three.
SCBA stands for?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay.
The cylinders go out effective two thousand and twenty-three. So, to order cylinders, we're now, we're dealing with fifteen-year-old harnesses and pieces that are starting to deteriorate. So, the grant we applied for, it goes for twenty-seven air packs, and the total grant will be a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars through FEMA. We've done as much soliciting through our government agencies as, that stuff like that to try to get their support to help us receive that grant, which is to be a huge debt load to take on for the relief association.
Didn't we allocate some of our COVID relief money to the fire department?
Not yet, we haven't discussed that yet.
It's in discussion, though.
We're, as part of our discussion of what we're going to do with that now that they've changed some of the rules around, yes. They did get money last year from the CARES money from the county. We got twenty-some thousand dollars back.
We got two different, two different, one from fire chiefs and one from, fire chief's office, I guess, and, yeah, I think it was like twenty-six thousand total.
Yeah, for the carnival.
You talk coming from Mascot?
From, it's coming from Pierce, out of Wisconsin.
Bruce, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Thanks, no, I'm good.
Okay.
I just have one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
And I, I got to put this out there, these guys are incredible. Hey, I'm looking at the page with average turnout time. They get, their average is three minutes and twenty-three seconds to get a piece of equipment out. And I know that saved structures in the past, that, you know, you guys are fast, there's people ready to go, it's fantastic, you know, we are so lucky to have you all.
Is that not, is that a load number or a credit for, because of bunking situations in the evening?
Bunking helps that. The bunkings help, we were up to three bunkings, now we're down to two. We have.
Evening and day?
The day, right now, right now, daytime, we have bunking, one bunking was consistently there, due to lack of employment, I guess would be the best term. The other one is at Penn State, so, you know, but he's there weekends, so, and periodically throughout the day, so, it does, we do pick him up, you know, in the mornings, early mornings and stuff like that. It has, it has helped. It has helped. There's, I know I've gone down on nights and there's, one, all three of them been there. And I'll show up, and Eric showed up and waited, I think it was Ashworth Woods called. And we, we both live on Brookside.
And they're waiting for you.
So, they were, they were there with gear, getting on. Eric got gear, I got gear, we left. So, to drive from Brookside to get in there, throw, throw bunker pants on for me and Eric get his full gear on and start down the road, those guys were crawling in the back getting air packs on, and we were out the door, so. The time, time-wise, saving-wise is, is a huge amount, and they've helped a lot, especially on the overnight times, getting out the door a little quicker, especially on the on-mic alarms. They're there, they have to take them, so people don't, aren't making the on-mic alarm because it's like, it's an on-mic alarm and need anything. We're still getting out the door because those guys are there, and that's part of the requirements when they're in the station.
Okay, well, I will say.
Oh, I just wanted, this isn't pharma-matic, but Amy reminded me that, that to put the word out, that we are planning having a carnival, we signed a contract for the, with the carnival people, so I don't know who's on carnival committee here, but we are planning to have a carnival.
Everybody's on carnival committee.
Everybody's on, basically, we are, yes, that's true.
Yeah, everybody in the company's on carnival.
And so we're basically planning on having a Memorial Day festivities, yes.
Okay, well, I just was going to make the comment, and I think we all appreciate what you guys do. I think you do a fabulous job, and every time I sit on a COG committee, whether it's facilities or public safety or whatever, and I hear all the requests and what they need from in-town, I just sit there and say, thank God we have the Bollesburg Fire Company. So I think you guys do a fabulous job, and I just keep up the good work, and if you need stuff from us, don't be afraid to ask us.
I appreciate that, and we appreciate every bit of help that this township supports us. I mean, it's a working relationship that we've worked together to get over the years, and we may need to maintain that, and then keep the relationship with our own community, because the community is part of the fire company, and we need to be a part of the fire company, so it keeps us all in an open relationship, and that's the only way to keep it positive, is my opinion.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, you're going to stick around, right?
Okay, next on the agenda is the Bull Avenue Corridor Needs Study.
Okay, I'll introduce this, and then Mr. Watts is here, and he's going to give us a presentation, and I'll attempt to share my screen and hope that works. At the December meeting, the board discussed the idea of doing a needs study on the Bull Avenue Corridor. The idea behind the needs study is to document needs and to identify solutions that have both township and PennDOT support. The study would address issues noted in both the smaller, in the small-area plan and utilize some concepts included in the proposed road diet. The review would prepare scopes, concept sketches, and cost estimates that can then be used by the township to apply for grant funding, MPO funding, and in capital planning. So Rob put together a list of potential projects to be included in the needs study. The goal for tonight's presentation is to discuss the projects and to kind of get us that scope for the study, and then Rob will give us a cost estimate to put the actual study together. So I'm going to try to share my screen and hope this works out.
I'll make a quick introduction so that I'm on the record, I guess. Rob Watts with McCormick Taylor.
Thank you, Amy.
Oh, from beginning, there we go.
We're just ending.
Right there.
All right. Good evening, Happy Valentine's Day. The, of course, the, the intent of this needs review, we're going to call the needs review because really we know a lot of the needs that are out there, and sort of the idea behind this is to document the needs as we know them, and identify some constructible projects that kind of come out of that, and complete a couple things in the process here of establishing the project scope for some of those projects, the justification, conduct any outreach we need to do, and establish some priorities, and then supply everything that is sort of needed for going after grants or capital planning, other project tie-ins through PennDOT Connects. This is kind of the idea behind the needs review, is to give the township staff everything they need to carry on and go after funding and proceed with some of these projects. That intent is kind of written into the document that you had received previously, and we had prepared a map that showed all the different projects. I wanted to use tonight as, you know, kind of a final opportunity for you to ask questions about the intent, what we plan to do, what we'd be providing in the process here. Amy, if you can go to the next slide there. This is sort of the why behind the whole thing. Why are we doing this right now? Of course, between the data that we were using in the road diet study and now, we had a pretty major pandemic, and we're kind of approached a new normal with our traffic situation that's out there. We also know that from talking to PennDOT in the road diet study, that they're kind of on board with the idea of a road diet. Now, we came back and obviously in our survey, we found out that the local community was, was a bit divided on that point, but just getting PennDOT to the point where they would consider something like that, I would consider it a success. And the, the process that we laid out for the road diet study is actually being passed around as sort of a, a, a good practice through PennDOT and the central office. So, those things are all victories, but we did find out there are a number of different concerns that are out there on the system right now, capacity concerns, some queuing concerns, situations with signal infrastructure that would need to be dealt with before a road diet project or, or some other improvements on the corridor would need to be done, and they'll need to get done regardless. You know, the signals and, and their condition will have to be addressed eventually, and any sort of, again, road diet would need to have certain other pieces addressed, and that was sort of PennDOT's hesitation in giving their approval for a road diet, is that they saw this chain of things that would have to happen before the road diet could actually go in, before you could change the laneage and different things out there. So that's kind of why we're proposing this, this sort of approach. Amy and Tom Zilla and I sat down, did a little bit of a debrief after the road diet, and kind of put our thoughts together about how we could use what we learned and what the next steps would be. So going on to the next slide there. The process itself would, would have a bit of a, this review and the scope and expectations, and, and that could be an internal thing where we discuss amongst staff or even the board, we can take what we do tonight and use that as some of our initial discussion. There'd be some data collection and analysis that would happen, traffic counts, we'd want to get new traffic data, relook at the crash trends that are out there, there've been some improvements that should have resolved some of the left turn issues at, say, Warner, Shingle Town, that intersection. We developed some solutions and some drawings, some concepts that could be used, cost estimates, and then conduct any sort of public outreach or public input that you'd want to have to sort of button it up. Again, the intent here, and if you go to the next slide, is to provide you with what we'll kind of call a mini-tip for the corridor, a list of projects with cost estimates, justifications, scopes of work, and some design and construction timelines, all things that you would need to go after a grant, and, and things you'd want to have sort of at your fingertips when you go and, and talk into a, a PennDOT Connect situation for, you know, level of effort, cost, and whatnot. So with that, I can review and go down through the projects, or if you've got any questions for me about the process, or why, or, you know, what we kind of would be providing out of this process. It is a process we have used in other municipalities and successfully. We've had a, a needs study that preceded a traffic signal replacement. In fact, the signal right in front of Bucknell University was sort of a needs review study, and we went for a Green Light Go grant with East Buffalo Township and got that grant, and that signal is now replaced. So that's kind of the latest example that I can give you of, of sort of the picture of what I have in mind for this, but can be applied a number of different places. So any questions before we walk down through the, the projects and, and kind of our starting point? This is not the final list, this is just more of things that we know about, and I know about, and Amy and Tom all know about from things we've done, land development projects and the road diet project. Shall we step through the drawings?
Go ahead, sure. We'll get out to the project. We'll, we'll pick you apart afterwards.
This is where, this is the interesting part, anyway. We'll start here on the west end of sort of our, our study area, if you would, at Warner Boulevard and Shingle Town Road and, and Bull Avenue. This, this corner up here is the one where a right turn lane was removed via a project that adjusted this intersection and replaced some signal poles. There are some other signal poles to be replaced out there, I think there's one more, and, and this lane, this channelized lane out here is, is a little bit problematic with how it approaches, I guess it's Kennard Road here that intersects. You have sort of the same problem with, with traffic swinging around there at higher speed and that. So removing that lane is one idea here, and then, of course, creating a bikeable situation to get them to the shoulder through that intersection. The signal pole and mast arm, of course, is right down here in this corner. The addition of pedestrian crossing, there is no pedestrian crossing to get across Bull Avenue at this intersection right now. That's something that could be added. And then, of course, adding those pedestrian accommodations. And then one other thing, this left turn lane is a little too short for the traffic that's out there right now, and lengthening it would open up capacity at the intersection and allow some other signal phasing and some capacity. You could actually reduce the delay at the intersection if you could lengthen that. Something we discovered when we designed the left turn arrows that are out there right now. Any questions about this intersection or additions or modifications?
I tell you, the removal of the right turn on Warner Boulevard was not a good idea.
You don't think so?
No. No. The traffic's backing up on it.
On, on Warner over here?
On Warner Boulevard, yeah.
Over here.
It moved a lot faster when, when that, when that Panhandle, whatever you call it, was there.
Okay.
Slip lane, a slip lane on that. I don't know, Danny. I haven't seen that. Yeah, I haven't seen, no, slip lanes.
No, it's gone.
I haven't seen that backup. I mean, I see a lot of right turns on red there.
Oh, coming east.
I don't see a lot of that. But if it would, but my question would be, you know, looking where you're putting the pedestrian walkway, if it was on the other side of the road, I don't see very few people walking on that side of the road.
Why would you?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I mean, if it were, if they had pedestrian crossing, they may.
Yeah, but I, but you know, you've got where it come from and where it go to.
There aren't trails on Bull Mansion property. Now, with the change in the director of the Bull Mansion, I don't know if those trails will stay, but they're very popular. So I think if there was a pedestrian crossing, people might be using those.
I think so too, yeah.
I just never see anybody walking up that.
Keeping the handle with number fours, that sort of been kept on the other side of Warner Boulevard also.
Okay.
Let me weigh in. I have heard people tell me that they're bothered by the lack of pedestrian crossing there to get across, to get across Bull Avenue. And not sure how, if we get a lot of use, but certainly I see it as a lack because if you're on that other side, you're kind of trapped and we're putting people in a bad situation.
That crossing could very well be on the other side. It very well could be over here.
Where's the pedestrian crossing on the Warner Boulevard side with respect to that island?
It actually follows the shared use path. It comes across the island now and it crosses right here.
Is the pedestrian path?
Pretty much. This is a little grainy, I apologize. And then it continues on the shared use path. So crossing on either side, either where I have it indicated or over here, is definitely, definitely doable. More artist conception on my behalf there. I appreciate the input and hearing the take on that right turn. Much of what I've heard has been positive about the removal of the channelized turn and the introduction of the right turn lane. So it's interesting to hear your perspective as well, Dennis, so thank you.
Well, the interesting public review, public hearing we had with that project, we had one. PennDOT would not do a second one. So our thoughts with respect to those kind of things were never absorbed. They said, we'll do one, we have the design laid out for the road, that's the way it's going to be. Thank you.
Okay. We'll try not to take that approach and make this a little bit open, more open.
That's the way they handled that reconstruction of Warner Boulevard.
Okay. Second one is at the PA Military Museum over here, the driveway that comes in, there's no signal here. This is a pretty free flow through here with stop control on either side. Old Bolzberg Road, I believe is the name over here, Bull Mansion. During a land development project over here, it came to the attention, there are no turn lanes, there are no left turn lanes here. All the, the left turns are made from the innermost through lane, either direction, to get into the Military Museum or over to the Bull Mansion side. So there is a desire to see how we could add left turn lanes here or provide a place for those left turn lanes to get out of the way of throughs, through traffic. When you have left turns made through, from through lanes, like this situation, you tend to get more rear end crashes and they increase as the traffic volume increases. So it's usually a good safety improvement.
Was there a traffic impact study done with respect to the brewery coming in?
There was, that was the one.
Did that show, was that thing in terms of numbers?
It showed us that a left turn lane would be justified there.
Out of the brewery, or coming into the brewery?
No, on Bull Avenue, turning.
Headed west, headed east.
Turning in here.
What about exiting that, making it left to go toward Warner Boulevard?
No. No left turn lane justified there. The traffic volume was low enough and typically you don't end up justifying left turn lanes on side streets like that. You generally get them more on the main line. We know the traffic goes in and out of the PA Military Museum, but Frank, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just go make the comment that when we had the traffic issues with the Fourth Fest, it was right there. That was where the major traffic issue was. People's choice, I'm sorry.
Yep.
We had the people's choice. That was the major point of a problem with the traffic.
That involved the fire police too.
And the flaggers.
The system was sort of broke down.
Flaggers, yep.
Yeah, PennDOT was not to, they wanted to see lanes built there, I believe, as a result of some of these land development projects and it, it'd be a big lift, you know, widening the road right there. Number six on the PA Military Museum driveway has to do with how the shared use path crosses there and the signage. We think there's a low cost improvement project that could be done there with signage and some pavement marking to call better attention to that, make it a little bit more recognizable that there's a crossing here and bikes are coming across there. People are out there a lot, it gets a lot of use. Dennis, as you were saying, you would know from walking out there and they take care of it in the winter, so you know, probably a good place to do a low cost type of improvement. With land development in this area, I know that there's been some talk of it, not in the cemetery, but you know, this area, a sidewalk along Bull Avenue comes up as a potential project for this area, so.
How wide is the right away at number seven to put a sidewalk along the cemetery?
That's a good question. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Has that ever been, to do, sort of do the parallel of a walking path at the museum side and put a walking, a sidewalk on the other side?
That would be the idea, the idea of a complete street.
Yeah.
And you've probably seen it done around here. Science Park Road might be a good example. They have a sidewalk on one side, they have a shared use path on the other. That's sort of what you have developing here. And with people walking, say from a, if something does come in and this would be developed in the future, this is a little bit maybe longer term, but this could be a pathway that they would take to walk toward the village, for instance.
Bruce has his hand up on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I've got a couple of comments here. One is I like the left turn lanes. I think we already have times a year when there's a lot of activity there and so, and I see that nothing but increasing, so those I think are a priority. The sidewalk's an interesting one because we have a sidewalk there that, one, increases the need for the crossing of Bull Avenue, both down at the Warner Boulevard intersection, but also right here. So I, to me, the sidewalk can have some unintended additional consequences that we may want to, we may want to think about carefully before we undertake that project.
I don't disagree with you there, Bruce, thank you.
Go ahead and go.
Go to the next one. Bolzberg Pike and Church Street, kind of in the middle of everything here. You can see the sidewalk that extends down to the intersection here. This intersection, the signal poles are reaching the end of their, end of their life. The foundations are certainly not up to spec and the mast arm lengths don't allow us to do the, to do the road diet that was kind of specified out in the road diet plan. We also know that PennDOT is planning a large signal control project, some updates to signals all along Atherton Street. That's a possible project tie-in for this location. Number eight would be the addition of left turn lanes here. Again, whether part of a road diet project or a widening type of situation. Right now, no left turn lanes and I think we all know what happens when people come up short on a left turner waiting to turn, people jumping in and out of lanes to get around them and different things like that. This signal could also have some of the pedestrian crossings completed. I don't believe there's a crossing on this side of the intersection. With active transportation being a greater issue and concern these days, putting crossings on all intersection approaches is becoming the way PennDOT desires to see them done. And if they can possibly do it, they try to.
What they takes flashing orange, flashing yellow arrows?
Flashing yellow arrows.
Like the Science Park Gates, Science Park-Gatesburg Road intersection?
Yes. Yes, it's a newer way of doing left turn signal phasing and it replaces, it can replace the other locations where you have arrows to make turns.
The regular green arrow.
Right. Sometimes you have a five section signal head, you know, where you've got arrows and green balls and things like that. Sometimes you just have three arrows, a red, a yellow, and a green, and you can only turn right on the arrow and then it's red all the rest of the time. It kind of combines those two. You can do all types of signal phasing using one type of signal head. So you don't need to change out your signal head when you want to change the left turn phasing. As traffic volume increases and vehicle conflict increases, you need a left turn arrow so that left turns can get through an intersection efficiently. That's why arrows get there.
Would the yellow arrow be useful at Warner Boulevard and Bull Avenue?
So we actually have the capability there, so when we were doing that.
There's a blank, there's a blank head there.
Yeah, it's in there. And when we were doing that signal upgrade, we had discussions with PennDOT because at the time, there was only one of those left turn arrows in our region and it was in Blair County. It wasn't, yeah. So I said, that intersection was enough of a problem, Rob probably remembers these discussions, and we were having all kinds of accidents there. I said, I don't really want to introduce a new concept to the drivers at that intersection. So we have the headspace and we left it so if we wanted to in the future, we could actually do what they're doing out there. I still don't love those though, they have them down in Lebanon County near where my parents live and they still trip me up, so.
They are new, they're different, and so they introduced that whole new different thing. We're used to the five section heads, we're used to the other way of doing things, so it.
Well, it allows you, it allows you to take that left turn, you know, like ours shuts off, so and when we had it that you could make the left turn, that's when we had all the accidents. So I would sooner that it stays the way it is down there at Warner Boulevard.
The problem is, is the sight distance because of the curve of the road.
Not offset.
So there's another one, for example, Blue Course Drive and Martin Street, they have the left turn one. If you're going towards Atherton on Blue Course, turn left on Martin Street, no sight problem there.
Yeah.
Same with Atherton and Blue Course.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually Nigel, that one does have a sight distance problem and it's programmed specially that if there's a vehicle in the opposing lane that creates a sight distance problem, they don't get the arrow, they get only a protected arrow. There's a really specialized thing that they put in there because of the sight distance. There's a lot of flexibility with the flashing yellow arrow and again, you need one head to do all types. We oftentimes got into having to swap out heads and that got into extra expense. This is a, this is a great infrastructure solution to that problem. But if we were to put signal phasing out here and a left turn phase would be justified, I would ask you to think about flashing yellow arrow, but obviously. I gotta have that fight with Amy, I guess.
I have comments on that, you can imagine, because I live up on the hill.
Yes.
And I guarantee you, there's a lot more, a lot more vehicles making a left turn onto the Bolzberg Pike due to Liberty Hill having access to Memorial Drive.
Yeah.
There's no question. And you know, some of the people that were against the road diet concept said it was going to affect traffic flow if you condensed that down, but as you alluded to before, you know, by the time you clear, if you're staying on Bull Avenue, by the time you clear that intersection going towards Earlystown Road, Route 45, going east, everybody's jockeying for lanes. And you know, some people are placing their bets that there isn't going to be a car in, you know, in front of them turning left on the Bolzberg Pike, but in peak traffic times, there always is. You could have a pack of, you know, like 10 cars lined up there, three of them are turning left. This is my observation from living there. So that really bothers me, that was a negative of the road diet. And you know, what's wrong with traffic calming? They do it all over Europe. I mean, we're, why would we want traffic to fly down that section of Bull Avenue? It's busy. It's kind of like we should have it slowed down a little bit, so just having one lane going straight through and then you pick your lane after that just seems to make a lot more sense.
Bruce raised his hand again then on the Zoom.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, with respect to flashing yellow arrows, let's not be afraid of change. If we never changed anything, then we'd be stuck back with horse and buggies. So yes, they're new to people and that would require us to do some education, maybe some signs saying new traffic patterns ahead, but if they're seen to be warranted, I think they're bear investigation. And you know, with time and as we adopt more of them, people will be used to them and understand what they mean and how to react to them.
The other one, Bruce?
No, he's good.
Okay. The addition of, the addition of the sidewalk in the blue circle is interesting because it dead ends into nowhere. There's no sidewalk at the, at the Land Serve where the Little Red House is and there's no sidewalk where the pump station is. So if one were to cross there, where would you go?
On the, on the side of the pump station, there is the wide asphalt path that actually it ends down here.
No, I mean.
Yeah, but over here, yeah, there's nothing there. Yeah, the thinking would be that eventually, if you do a project like this and you would want to put in that other crossing, because the pump station of course has a lot of traffic, you might end up putting in curb ramps over here and even extending the sidewalk in some fashion.
And there's a sidewalk on that vacant lot that the church owns, it goes down to the Little White House that the church owns, but it does not go in front of the Land Serve building heading down to the intersection. There's probably a hundred foot section of no sidewalk there.
Interestingly enough, though, there are two residents that live up on Tressler Street, I believe, I see them every year at the tree lighting, who cross every day on that side of Bull Avenue, they walk. And when I see them at the tree, and I run into them when I'm walking in my neighborhood and when I talk to them, yeah, that's the way they come down and I've seen other people that only use that side, that don't cross on the other side.
That is, that is interesting.
The other thing to keep in mind, you know, as part of the road diet, one of the options was to run multi-use bike paths up both sides of that road. No, there was one that had both sides. There was one that had, well, whatever, but there was one that had them on both sides that you could make it a walking bike path that would go all the way up along there.
You're really looking for trouble, man.
No, I'm just making a comment, bud. But there was, if I remember, there was, am I not wrong?
One of the proposals, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, traffic signals get replaced about once every 20 to 25 years, so if you have a chance to add a pedestrian crossing rather than trying to add it later, we generally try to do that. And then you can, you can arrange sidewalks and things like that around that signal.
I know, we can take more of the cross, I'm sure, move it down to Mary Elizabeth and cancel the order on the new one.
Yeah, that's going to work.
It's a long time.
I'll let you try to find an engineer to sign off on that, how about that?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go to the next one if we're done here. This one has a lot going on, so I'll kind of step through it in numerical order. The first one here for lengthen and modify the left turn lanes involves the left turn lane to Pine Street and the left turn lane to Earlystown Road. This is the, what I call a back-to-back lane. You have the left turn lane going to Pine Street, back-to-back with the left turn lane to Earlystown. The lengths of each are limited by the other one. And we all know that this is a huge turning movement here and those queues can cause us issues with the other through lanes going through here. So being able to lengthen that lane would be a really good thing. So we would change this from a, from a back-to-back to what we call side-by-side. We would have a full left turn lane for this full length and then we would have a shorter lane, but it would be over here for Pine Street. That would help this approach here. As a result of that, the through traffic and the right turn lane to Main Street would get combined into one lane and that could continue out through this direction. That would also eliminate the jockeying for position. You'd have one declared through lane rather than, yeah, the race, the racetrack situation would hopefully die down and we wouldn't have as many speed-related incidents in there, side sweeps and things like that. Dennis will love this one again.
Same thing.
Yes, this is the channelized lane that comes through here that we discovered that residents of the area do like that lane. They like being able to free flow through there and flow right onto Bull Avenue. I know in my conversations with Van Winter about the road diet, that creates the, some issues for the fire department in pulling their apparatus out there onto Bull Avenue. When cars come around there, they slide over into the other lane and they've got to kind of guess about what's going to happen.
It's here, you're kind of always, you're not sure where they're going to go over or not.
Yeah, so we felt like the idea of putting either yield control on that lane or replacing it with a right turn lane, kind of like what was done up at Warner Boulevard, would clear the ground, so to speak, to be able to do something with the road diet here. That lane with bikes coming into there puts bikes in a really, really tough position if you're going to put bikes out there. It also creates, you know, a higher speed environment. I think Bolzberg area, this area, the vision for it is changing from, you know, a higher speed, more rural area, which it once was, to a little bit more developed, pedestrian-friendly, you know, urban type of space. So we're, we get to that by taking out some of those wider turns that allow the higher speeds.
The only comment I've heard with concern was that the stacking of cars, would that be enough to impede coming out of the businesses there or Liberty Hill? I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what amount of cars come through that anyone, maybe once a day, there may be a problem there. But that was a concern of stacking of cars.
In, in the morning, uh, the queue that would extend back would extend right back.
Yes.
Back to Harp, was that Harpster?
Well, Harpster Lane, Harpster Lane is there, yes.
Yeah, that, the length here kind of tells you about what the queue would be in the morning and that's the heavy peak coming in.
What you've got right there now?
Yeah, that's about the length of the, the queue.
I suspected that, but that's a concern.
Yeah, you're up, you're up pretty high. So that, that is a long queue compared to what it was, it is now, which it's nothing because people just kind of go right through there.
Keeping that right, that right pan handle, the, the, the channelized lane would shorten that.
Oh yeah, there would be, yeah, there would be no.
Well, if you eliminate the slip lane, then you, the concern is stacking, but you think that would be, that would not be a problem?
That, that, that's a very long red light.
No, it's, it's only.
So you end up with a lot of cars backed up.
Forty-seven seconds.
But you're gonna adjust that.
It's forty-seven seconds.
Well, it needs to be adjusted.
Less than forty-seven seconds?
Honestly, that slip lane is problematic because not a lot of people know you're supposed to keep going. So you come through and they stop and they yield and.
It's, it's a great idea and it does keep traffic moving, but it also has its drawbacks. When you're pulling out of either, well, Pine Street or any of that business along there, you're not sure whether they're gonna come down, stay over there or not, and you gotta get across traffic. So it does create some problems. I don't know if we've had serious issues there, but it does create problems.
Well, the, the other thing to keep in mind, guys, and, and when we started this with the road diet and everything, it was to make that corridor a pedestrian, a much safer corridor. Right now, we've got a racetrack and, and you know, in answer to you guys' question about the queue and the backup, well, they can get on the bypass. You know, they don't have to come into Bollesburg. They can get on the bypass and go into College Avenue.
That's, that's my point. Would that queue not get back?
If, if it's, if it's, if it takes you longer to go this way because it's slower or there's red lights and you can get on the bypass and go quicker, which way are you gonna go? You're gonna bypass, you're gonna go quicker. And I think at some point, we have to realize that, that if we're gonna put pedestrian and bike pass in here, we're gonna have to slow and people, you know, I, I don't want to say we don't want them to come through the township, but we have four-lane roads that they can, they can go on and, and if they want to go fast and sixty and seventy cut in and out of the lanes, we got a bypass.
I think sixty and seventy is a little bit of exaggeration.
I'm just saying, they, we've got, we've got, we've got a bypass for that.
Pedestrian crossing on that section goes across, well, across the intersection, doesn't it?
Yeah, there, there are crossings on, I believe, all these approaches right now. The one we're talking about here straightens this one out. Right now, it has to go way out here and go across the island. Here, it stays right along the road and then we can connect this way as well. And, and just to.
Where does it go going that way?
Goes to the shoulder, goes to the shoulder of the road. The shoulder here is wide.
Runs into the bank parking lot.
Goes into, into Shawley's Bank, which, which is not very well.
No.
Yeah, it, they could get out here to the pizza place. That would be the, the main connection. Again, if you're gonna replace the traffic signal, which is another project here, um, you know, you, you try to make as many of those pedestrian connections while you're at it. Um, and, and not to ignore the, the big gorilla or the elephant in the room, I guess, with, uh, the big PEL project that's happening off to the east. Um, they said the goal of this project is to arm you with the cost to do certain projects. And, uh, you know, the decision would have to be made whether we like, you know, whether we like this lane, whether we don't like the lane or what we want to do going, going down the, going down the road in the future.
What about the sidewalk from that corner heading up toward, uh, Miller Electric and up to, uh, the neighborhood you live in?
Yeah, well, that's, I think that's what these.
Whatever twelve is.
Yeah, that's what the, well, says designated bike shoulders. I'm assuming that's what the L lines are.
Yeah, for Project fourteen, the, the shoulders there are very wide and they could be, uh, designated as bike lanes, actually.
Share a path.
Um, they would be, um, designated as bike lanes. And as a bike lane along a state route, it would qualify for maintenance by, by Pendott rather than the township. That would be one of the advantages of going that way.
But the neighborhood. Down for, that could tie into that, that intersection.
Yeah, it could. The problem that we found was when we did that. Project with the trees. It's between, uh, West Drive and Honeysuckle Drive, or Discovery Drive, rather. Uh, when we did that project, we found out that the right-of-way goes, it's like super wide, super wide and it's real narrow. And then, and then there's all kinds of utilities in there. So putting a bike path in there is probably not the most feasible thing. But the shoulders are so wide that people do bike along there because they go up to Discovery Drive to go to the biking trails.
It would be a fairly, uh, cost-effective thing to do, the pavement mark, the, the shoulders. And it shouldn't, it shouldn't increase your maintenance on that. Uh, the last connection is, is just a sidewalk connection. The sidewalk starts back here and you could connect out to the intersection here. The road is fairly narrow. Um, there are some things in there you'd have to get concerned about.
What side of the street is that on?
That's on the north side of Main Street.
It's across the street from us.
Right, right over there.
Not on the old bank, so the other side.
It's on, it's on the other side. Yeah.
The car company side.
The sidewalk on the other side.
Okay.
You could do it on both sides, but you know, we're just one for now.
We have a sort of impeding bridge.
Yes.
On both sides?
Yes, yes. You'd have to be careful what you do with that. So these are the, the projects that we've, we've pulled together, things we know about. Um, the next step in defining what it would take for us to prepare cost estimates and go through this would be to limit this list somewhat. There's really, there's no need to go hog wild and do any sort of pie in the sky stuff. I would encourage you to stay focused on a couple of projects that you, that you know are, are important to you, that you know are, you know, imminent or, or need to be done eventually or are part of the township's responsibility. And then maybe add a few others that get you down the road a little bit more. But this is not me trying to get a, get a contract to do cost estimates for everything under the sun here. Um, but this is kind of, I guess, put out there as a proposal for, uh, the Board of Supervisors to, um, I guess, press go on or ask your questions and we can go forward.
What assistance would you get from the military museum people to improve the, uh, the entry into their property? With the turn lane or you, you've been talking about improving the sidewalk there. Is that something that they become involved in or is this sort of a state?
I, I don't know that they would get involved in, in funding that project necessarily. I'm not quite sure about their standing. I don't work with a whole lot of museum organizations like that.
It, it's a state, so we'd be trying to come out of the same pot somehow, maybe a different direction.
Well, it's a historic commission.
I'm sure they would have an interest in being involved in the project. Yeah, they would certainly be.
Yeah, I don't know that financially they would be involved, but we are a very good partnership with the Military Museum. So, I mean, I think they might be amenable to talking about it.
So, so I guess the question you're, you're asking us or that we need the information is which one of these would we want to pick or prioritize?
Sure, sure. No, the, the next step I would see would be us to kind of figure out how many different projects do you want me sketching up concepts for and, um, coming up with cost estimates and justifications, um, so that I can write, um, a scope and, and put a dollar number for, for doing that sort of work for you. Uh, we can do that via a survey. We could take all fourteen of these projects. We could have you all weigh in on them. We could get staff involved. Um, we could, we could send it out far and wide, but I think at this point, this is more for an internal type of discussion. I think a survey like that could be the way to go.
What about putting us in the planning commission?
I was gonna say, maybe we have the planning commission as well.
We'll see it in, what, 2032?
No, we'll put it, you guys will fill it out and then Rob will collect the responses.
Well, I, I have a couple of comments to make here. And this is a great opportunity. I, I would like to see us tie this in with other, if one great project. In other words, we've, we met this morning with Pendott on the interconnector, uh, and who knows where that's gonna be. We'll know, we'll know, I guess, something beyond a year, what the routes are going to be. But I, I see this, we just enacted our village commercial ordinance and we're gonna work on our buffer zones. I'd like to see us treat this whole corridor from Discovery Drive to Warner Boulevard as a corridor. We're, we want to protect with these new roads coming through, we want to protect the, the rural or the village, uh, atmosphere of Bollesburg, Harris, this side of Harris Township. And this is a good opportunity to do this while we're doing this. Protect that village atmosphere. We put that village commercial in so that we can put shops, make that a little shopping, a shopping center, sort of a village-type thing as, as, as buildings fall down or burned out or sold. We tie that all together. Starting to clear back at, at Warner Boulevard or at the Discovery Drive with that, the trees we cut down, I'd like to see an overall vision of that whole thing. And this certainly is about half of that vision. But I don't know how we can tie all that together, whether it takes a, a group or committee or everybody has suggestions to tie that in with, with landscaping, with, uh, our, our zoning, with their village commercial and you. All tie it all together to make that preserve this. Cause I can see, we're looking at 2050 and beyond, what they're, what Pendott is studying, and it's, traffic is gonna grow tremendously around it. We're gonna be growth, growth crazy around here. And I can't see it slowing down. Every time we think it does, it jumps another six, eight, 10% a year. That's sixty, eighty percent in 10 years or so. So I, I don't know what, what would, what the process would be, but certainly using your recommendations and maybe some landscape and, and zoning, we could tie this all together, make it one good project. And then we can see what, what we want to go through right now. And, but, but we can do this stuff anytime. We can do a lot of this stuff from Warner Boulevard anytime. But I, I think it should be all one big picture because it's gonna, it'll preserve the, the rural characteristic or the hometown characteristic of, of the center of the Harris Township. Because there's gonna be a lot of pressure, no doubt about it.
Well, maybe we could, well, I think what Bud's talking about and, and I, I know if we take these projects and, and we say, okay, this is what we, like making a master plan, but we could phase it. You know, because we're not, obviously, you know, money's tight. We, could we get all the money for it or could we come up? But maybe we can phase it in phase one, two, three or whatever. But I, I have to agree with Bud in one aspect. I mean, if you'd have seen the numbers that, that we saw this morning on, on the traffic and what's coming in, in the future coming this way, even with the new road. Uh, if we don't do something soon about the safety out here and the speed and people cutting in and out of traffic and in and out and crossing the lanes, if we don't start working on that now, it'll become almost impossible. Or it'll come to a point where it's very tragic and then we're gonna have to do something. So I think we gotta keep it on the, on the table.
Safety's only part of it. For me, the other part is designing a master plan that we can.
Right. Which we have the Bull, the small area business plan.
Well, we have that, but we need to, we need to tie those all together.
Bruce has his hand up.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, you know, while I, I don't want to disagree with Bud, let me point out that when we, when we put this all into one package, uh, with the road diet package, our, our, our residents kind of recoiled at all of it. So I think phasing it, maybe taking it more, a little more piecemeal might make it more palatable or more, not, I don't want to use the word palatable, more understandable to people, um, rather than just one big package. Let me suggest now though, that I see is we, we, we just reviewed these things in terms of locations, but I'd like to kind of think about it in terms of more of a thematic. So I saw one is left turn lanes all the way along there at all the intersections we talked about being, being something to consider. And I, and I think that's not, that's not, that's, that's achievable. That, that, that's not a big deal to me to get that going. Maybe it is, I don't know. Maybe talk to Pendott, everything's a big deal. Uh, two is I see, um, another theme is people coming in from the north, be it on the bike, on Earlystown Road, on Warner Boulevard and making that right turn into, um, uh, into State College, heading into State College. And we certainly see along all those entrances, that's kind of a priority. So that, that's a second theory theme for me. And, and again, that, that cuts across those three intersections, but I see that as a common need to be thoughtfully considered both at, at Warner Boulevard, at the Pike, Bollesburg Pike, and at Earlystown Road. And the third one is we're talking about pedestrian crossings. And I, you know, I'm, I'm more interested in getting safe crossings where we have, resident building more sidewalks right now and increasing the need for those pedestrian crossings. I'm certainly down the road, that might be something we want and we want to consider in terms of our long-term plans and road diet. But right now, I see as a priority, just getting people safely across that highway corridor. So that's my, those are my thoughts, my, kind of my three themes. And I think we ought to look at it as much along those themes as along intersection A, intersection B, and intersection C. That's it.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we know where we want to go. I think we want to look at this and I, I've heard, you know, let's get, let's get some priorities. And I agree that the left-hand turn lanes, if we put them in and everybody start likes them, maybe they'll sign on to the road diet. You know, I mean.
The Pine Street left-hand turn, I like it solved very easily. Do not allow entrance to the Bollesburg Mart off of Pine Street going that way. And that will eliminate 99% of the cars starting to left on Pine Street.
So why don't we do this? Why don't Rob and I work together and get a survey up and running? I like Bruce's idea of kind of doing it around the thematic things so that there's the pedestrian stuff, the safety stuff, turning lanes. But let's get this, uh, survey together. Let's let the planning commission weigh in, um, on that. I, I mean, you could even open it up to the Parks and Rec Committee if you wanted to or the Shade Tree Commission and then, um, the board. And then we can come back to you, you know, March or April, maybe April and say this is kind of what the results showed and, and put something together.
Yep.
And, and I think the other thing I'd like to see is when you put the, uh, you have several traffic signal, I would just put it out, okay, to, to replace a traffic signal, it's a hundred grand or 200 grand, whatever the number is. So that we could say, okay, we'll do one of those every other year or every year. That, that we could do before, after, during this. I mean, there's some things we're gonna do, putting crosswalks and stuff. And obviously they're gonna need the signals, but maybe that's something we can do as a separate thing. But, but I think, yeah, we need to see some numbers on it so we know where we're heading and how much we're looking at.
Traffic signals were not a shared cost for Pendott.
No.
No.
They, they are not unless, unless you go after, um, one of their green light go or Arlie grants. Green light go is one of the most popular mechanisms for replacing signals right now. It's the mechanism we used out in, uh, East Buffalo Township. And the state pays 80%, the township pays 20%.
College Township, I think, that one, didn't they?
Ferguson did. I don't know that College did.
And you know, does College Township get a green light?
There's also a program called the Automatic Red Light Enforcement, um, program that has money that is available on a grant. And then multimodal is one where you could probably do a number of different things at once. Those projects tend to be a little bit larger. But then you're not just talking about traffic signals. You want to generally work with sidewalks, biking. You want to get a multimodal, truly multimodal project out of that.
Well, I think we want to stay from, from Discovery Drive to Warner Boulevard.
Yeah, I think so. I think the whole, the whole corridor needs that.
Yeah. And we decided on this need study format because you can combine these projects together or you can keep them separate and go after separate grants here and there. Um, it's a very flexible way to go. Um, if you want to go bigger and you want to try to combine things and get one big plan, um, we're also familiar with doing mobility study, we'll call them mobility studies, where we actually dig in and we don't just take the needs that we know about. We're looking for other things, other opportunities, reshaping a space and looking out and kind of using imagination. Isn't just engineering at that point. It's, it's, there can be some imagination that comes into it. But, uh, we think, I think between Amy and Tom and I, using what we learned from the, the road diet study and everything else that we've collected over our years of working together, uh, this just kind of fell out to us as a way we could provide a good service to you and enable your staff, give them the information they need, um, you know, without writing applications for you, which we don't need to do. Amy does a better job at that.
But for instance, uh, up West Drive, there's sort of a turning lane there, I guess. And there's always an issue at, at Tory Lane coming in out of there. That's a, that's sort of a strange intersection right there.
Yeah, that is.
To come off of Colonial Press and, um, Miller Electric and a lot, a lot of traffic is going up that hill, up Tory Lane. A lot of traffic's going up Tory Lane. That, that I think you should look at that also.
Shall we expand our look up to Discovery Drive? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think it, I don't know what it would take, but I think you should do that, yes.
I think so because we had.
We'll check the new signals, so.
Cause we had talked about that, um, shared use path that we had talked about when you put in there. And there was some, there was some hesitation among some of the neighbors on Honeysuckle Drive, but there was some support. And that's also where I think maybe opening this up and letting the Parks and Rec Committee and the Shade Tree Commission also weigh in. Because one of the things we're talking about with our new park, Tussie Pond Park, um, up next to the trails at Calvary Baptist and trying to get people out there and having the integrated recreation corridor. I think Bruce had talked about that in the past. Um, so letting them weigh in as well because this, I think, plays into, I hate to agree with Bud, but it's Valentine's Day, so I guess I'm going to, but it, it plays into.
I'll give you a vote if you did.
Take it. It plays into that whole idea of, we could almost do, we have the small area plan, but we could almost turn this into like a master plan for that corridor and do all the streetscape type of improvements as well, the buffers and things through there to help the, the, uh, community kind of feel like the village.
Well, I think, I think we know where we want to go. And so I'm gonna try to move this on. So, yeah, let's go ahead and do this. So, yeah, let's go ahead and do the survey and, and we can prioritize and send, we're going to send it out to the planning commission and us as a minimum.
Yeah.
And, and then they, you know, review it and we'll bring it back and, and visit it again. But I think we all know where we're heading from the Discovery Drive, the corridor. So unless there's any other major comments, we're going to move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
I think we'll put a parking meter down there, right away, police park, make them pay the park down there.
No, what, oh, wait, what did I do? Hold on.
Overview of the Peddlers and Solicitors License Regulations. Okay, uh, you going to take this, Amy, or do you want me to go ahead or?
No, Todd's going to take this.
Go ahead, Todd, wherever you're at.
Hold on, I got to figure out how to make him show up on the screen. I don't know what I'm doing. Hold on. What's going on? Oh, oh, there he is. Okay, you're there. You're there, Todd. You're here.
Go ahead, Todd.
Okay.
Staff received complaints in 2021 regarding the requirements of the regulations pertaining to peddler solicitors and transit retail merchants with the temporary businesses in the township. And the complaints included that Harris Township requires the issuance of licenses for such activities and surrounding municipalities do not. That the process is long and complicated, that the licenses are expensive, and that the licenses serve no purpose. Staff provided an email in late 2021 addressing the concerns at the time, copy of which was included with the agenda. Staff has recently conducted research into the local and state regulations pertaining to peddler solicitor and transit retail merchant license regulations and composed a memorandum with the findings that was also included with your agenda. A copy of the Harris Township regulations is additionally provided for review. Based on the research conducted by staff, it appears that the township's regulations are in line with what our neighbors in the center region and across the state are doing. Staff would not suggest changing the regulations at this time. Instead, uh, we would, should think about doing more outreach so event organizers know that we have these regulations and that their vendors need to apply for licenses.
Okay, uh, all right, so I, I know we're going to have some comments and everything else. Uh, so I will open it up to whoever wants to go first.
I want to thank Todd. I've read a lot of the good history reading all of this material. Didn't realize it went back that, that far with respect to, uh, even looking at this. So a lot, a lot of good information there, a lot of good comparison there for the, for other townships with respect to where we sit. We're, we're, we're not out in right field and left field. We're, we're pretty well with, uh, in touch with the rest of them, so. I did a lot of redlining and, you know, we can go from there.
All right, you, you want to, you want to add anything now or you want to?
No, it's, it's.
Okay.
You want anything now?
And Nigel, you want to add anything or you?
No.
Bring it.
I sure do.
I need, well, let me give Bruce. Bruce, do you want to do anything before I give it to Bud?
Oh, God, Bud will take forever. Yeah.
Yes, I will.
That's why, that's why I asked.
We don't want to talk all day.
I like the idea of involving the event organizers. I could see, um, us educating them and, and having them be the conduit to the individual vendors. Um, maybe even providing them with a packet that includes the application forms, um, some overall directions and, 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 you know, get them to be the liaison and streamline the process as much as possible for their vendors. I think it might make everybody's life a little easier.
All right, um, okay, thank you. Um, one of the things, but I'm going to go ahead before you, because I know you're going to be a while. Listen, anyway, uh, one of the things I got thinking about as I read this, I started thinking about, well, Carvana. I thought about, uh, you know, all these things you buy online now that gets mailed or, or brought in. Is that, is that a solicitor that's not, we don't have any rules and regs over? So I started thinking about that. And, and what maybe continued was, we have a lot of vendors that come to Memorial Day mostly all the time, or the Fireman's Carnival, or, or they, they are regulars. Yes, they come in every time. Why couldn't we do something like a, I don't know, an annual or a bi, like, like you register with the township and that, that gets you in and you just have to do an event thing whenever you're coming in. It's just a formality to say, I'll be at that event. Instead of, instead of trying to, every time they come in, if they come in like two or three times a year, they go through the process two or three times, they give us their, their, their insurance and everything that we need to, that, that we would have on our thing. They, they register and they're a vendor here for yearly, two, two years. I don't know how long we would, that's something we could research. But I got thinking about that and allowing it to happen online. If you're already registered, you know, you can just go online, tell them you're coming, hit a button and you're, you're good to go. So that's just where my thoughts were.
That's similar to what the Ferguson Township, third paragraph is.
Wait, let Todd answer this because we actually already have that built into our ordinance.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, the, 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 the second thing you talked about there, Frank, our, our licenses are good for six months. So if someone chose to do so, if they, if they thought that for some reason they were going to be at two or three events in the, in Harris Township in a given year and it's spread out over a year, they could come in every January if they wanted and get their license. And then, you know, before that six-month period expired, before that license expired, if they wanted to renew it, uh, they could do that. And that would get them covered for the remaining six months of the year. So the process that you talked about there is already in place if somebody wants to take care of it. The one thing that we would probably have to change in our ordinance is that the ordinance currently requires that each such person renewing their license has to fill out a new application. If it was, if it was a situation where they didn't let their permit expire and they contacted us prior to the expiration of the six-month period, we could extend that for additional six months for, for, you know, an additional fee. Uh, the first part of your comment is things like Carvana and those things, they don't do any selling door-to-door in the township. They, whenever they deliver a vehicle, it's already been purchased. The person's already done the shopping online. They're not going to their neighbor saying, would you like to buy this car that's also on the trailer? Do you want to sell me your car? As far as I know, they're not doing that. That's just like, uh, you know, a, a UPS delivery or a FedEx delivery. The, the item's already purchased and it's just being delivered.
Okay, Bud, you're up.
Well, I, I just, uh, this is written by a lawyer. You guys have tried to read that. You realize that.
I know that.
Uh, the, the, what, uh, this concerns me and of course, what has happened here is this was designed for peddling and soliciting, going door-to-door. And I understand, no doubt about it. We want to make sure that people that come knocking on your door are authorized, you're going to open the door to somebody that, that's trying to sell something or has a service they want to offer you or something. Yes, we want to make sure who they are. And that's, that's, that, that is, is, uh, not debatable. Uh, the other, the reason this came up, of course, if this ordinance works so well, it wouldn't have come up here, is the craftsmen that come with their tents. And mom and pop bring their wares in and sell them at, at different places. And I think we need to find a way to, to handle that a little differently. They're not, they're not peddler, they're not peddling. In fact, I read this definition of peddling and I'm not so sure that that falls into someone that sets up a booth that wants to sell, uh, brooms that he made. I don't know whether that, how that can be interpreted. It probably could be if you wanted to. But there is, there is some issues here. And how can someone that goes on Main Street over here, sets up their booth, and they don't have to get a license because?
It's Memorial Day.
It's Memorial Day. But if they go up, if they go up at Watson's Farm, they're also a crook. We have to make sure that they're legal.
They, they actually technically, we should have everyone that comes from Memorial Day register and go through this process. But, and this predates Todd and it predates me. The decision was made when Memorial Day started way back when, because it's a community event that the town, township is involved in sponsoring, we don't make the people go through the license process. We, we should make them go through it. We didn't do it for People's Choice because People's Choice is on state-owned property and our regulations don't extend to state-owned property.
The vendors register with the.
Whoever runs the, the, the.
Whoever runs the Memorial Day.
Yes.
There's a $25 fee to set up your pie booth.
But that does, that, it's not. Right, but that doesn't, they're not getting a license through us under the.
But we, we have the list of who those people are.
Yeah.
We have the list and we collect insurance from the, the sponsor, which is because they're using our street. So we do have some insurance. The whole idea behind this is that if I were to go, and I'll use University Wine Company because that's where this, sort of all the complaints originated from. University Wine Company had a fall harvest festival, which is fine. They're allowed to do it under their wiry. They had the fall harvest festival. So if I go out there and say I go and I buy crafts from somebody, and that's become, this is like sort of how our economy's changed because of the pandemic, right? Lots of people making stuff from home. So I go and buy something and that vendor steals my credit card and charges a bunch of stuff on it. We have the information then, we have the license, and we can turn all of that over to the State College Police and say, this person stole a bunch of people's identities. Here's the information, and they can go back and prosecute him.
How do you know that?
Well, that's the whole purpose of these licenses.
Well, no, this is.
Well, you have the same thing on Memorial Day. I wonder if somebody Memorial Day.
Well, that's, that's why we should actually collect them on Memorial Day.
If I go down to Duffy's and someone steals them, do they have my, they, they obligated to turn this over to township?
But if you were at Duffy's, you could go to State College and Police and say, I was at.
Still can go to State College Police.
But Duffy's is a brick and mortar operation. You're conflating the two.
If, if the people, like People's Choice or not People's Choice, they're day in town. Whoever, whoever is, is the committee, they know who those people are. They, they charge them a fee to be there. They know who they are. They don't, why is it our responsibility to say, if, if, we have to keep track of that? I would think if we make the people that run the venue have a little more responsibility and say, okay, do you know who your vendors are?
Well, in the case of Memorial Day, the conservancy registers.
Yeah.
The vendors.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Because you, the pie, the Linden Hall Pie people got a tag that says, you're in booth 35.
But you're not registered with the township.
That, well, that's why, that's why we're here.
Todd has his hand up.
Well, that's why we're here.
We have half of the information.
Todd, go ahead, Todd.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania grants to municipalities the police power to require the things our ordinance requires. The, we, we can't require a private citizen or a, a, a business or an organization to collect that information for us and turn it over to us because that's, that's not what our police power is. The police power is narrowly, narrowly defined as belonging to the municipality. If, if you read the last couple paragraphs of, of my memo, it describes exactly what police power the municipality has. We are the only ones and the state, and in our case, the State College Police, that have the ability and the authority to do that. If we pass that responsibility off on other people that don't have the police powers, it, it's, it's not going to be done correctly and there, there will be no way to use that, uh, in, in a court of law if it ever comes to that.
So I, I would agree with what I was saying.
Todd, I'd also have to say that if I'm a lawyer and I go to a court of law and I say, well, you don't do it for the Bowlsburg Memorial Day, by golly, well, I think you're selectively doing it.
Well, that's, that's just an argument.
Here's my thing, though. I, I wanted to get into this and, you know, this is a discussion I and I, I think we've raised the discussion that we do need to, to look at this. I, I don't think we're going to resolve it here tonight. We can all talk a lot. We're not going to resolve anything. So where do we go from here? Do we send this to planning? I mean, where do we send this?
It's not a planning commission thing.
Let's come up with some suggestions and we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
I, I liked Bruce's suggestion about the whole idea of educating the event organizers, giving them a packet with, you know, a liaison, kind of streamlining the process. Because I think part of the concern that we heard with the wine company was, yeah, there were some people that complained about the fact that they had to pay the fee and get the license. But then there were some people that didn't understand the whole, because in this day and age, we live in the day and age where you go on the internet and you renew your car registration and you print out your registration form. They didn't understand the whole purpose of, you have to show up at the township, give us your license. We make a photocopy of it. We keep it with your registr, your permit. So then if something happens, we have that information to turn over to State College Police.
Gee, turn the heat up there.
Did, did the vendors at the University Wine Event have to pay to go there too?
I'm sure they probably did.
They paid.
Yeah, Todd, do we know that?
I imagine they pay to be there.
Yeah, it's my understanding and talking to a few of them that, uh, they said that the University Wine Company did charge a separate fee. So they were wondering why, a lot of them thought that they were double charged for the same thing. I don't know what the explanation was from, you know, the, the person holding the event. I would also add that if you're thinking about making any changes to these regulations, I would suggest that you consider consulting with the State College Police before you do so.
Consulting with State College Police.
I do work with the State College Police on these things. There, it doesn't happen very often, but every year or two, um, there is a, there is a group or, or a person going around door-to-door. I find them and tell them that they have to get a license and they have to stop before, uh, until they get the license. And they ignore me, of course. So I call the State College Police and the State College Police go and, 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 you know, we, we've worked, we've worked together with the State College Police several times over the time I've worked here, identifying people who were going door-to-door because even if they weren't causing problems in Harris Township, they were causing problems elsewhere in the center region and, uh, they, they want to know what information we have.
Well, the bottom line is I think we're looking at two categories or classifications of peddlers and vendors. I think we're looking, we need to look at that more than anything else.
Two days ago, I had a window vendor.
Yeah.
Knock on my door. On Rush Valley Road.
Well, did he have identification? Did he?
No, no, didn't.
Mine did. I made sure that you're talking about the, mine did very much today. It happened today. He has his badge of some sort on him.
But he, he walked Rush Valley Road.
We had a gentleman who was selling meats. Was it meats, Todd? It was meats.
Yeah, we, we've had occasions for, uh, a, a number of times in the last number of years where some, uh, some meat company that does orders, they take orders, uh, uh, online or over the phone and then they deliver meat to customers that have already paid for it, much like we talked about earlier, but they also have extra meat on their truck. So they also go door-to-door in the neighborhoods that they, uh, they're delivering the meat and ask people if they'd like to buy some meat off the back of the truck.
Yeah. What about, what about the Schwanz company?
If they don't get a license for that, and, and talking to the State College Police, they've done that in other municipalities and all the municipalities in the center regions that I'm aware of, uh, require that to be licensed and they've also had the same issue with that company. Few years ago, the State College Police actually did catch them and let them know that there was an issue. And I don't think we've had a problem since.
Todd, does the Schwanz company fall into this category?
I think Schwanz, uh, it's not entirely, but for the most part, they take orders and then they deliver the orders. I know, I know some, some business.
No, they come door-to-door.
They have a regular bill.
They, they place regular orders.
Oh, you, you stop them and order what you want from them right there off the truck.
Yeah, no, they don't, they don't take orders. They do it right away.
They, they come to the house.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, but I think they're requested to come to the house too.
Yeah.
I think if you look at our regulations, if you're requested to come there, uh, it's, it's a different situation than full call door-to-door.
And you can order online through them too, so. What would happen if I suggested to have Todd spend some time with the Ferguson Township, the College Township people and to, to sort of share thoughts about why theirs works and how it works and to, to get some consensus amongst us because.
That's the way we always did it. That's the way we always did it.
We're not going to solve that here.
No, we're not. But I will say that we're doing, if you read his memo, their fees are way more than ours.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I saw that. Yeah.
Their licenses are for less time, but we're doing the exact same stuff that they're doing.
I don't think we're concerned about the fees, if it's necessary, or the price of it. It's when, when would it, when is it appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's.
And I think we could discover that if we shared some thought with the people, other people that are doing it.
Well, but I, well, I, as interesting is that if People's Choice were back here again, that same vendor go to People's Choice, it's not require any, that background check or anything like this. He can go up to Watson's Farm and all of a sudden he's a criminal. He has to make sure he has a background check. That, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Bruce has his hand up.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, um, I would, well, two things. One is I would not mind us making it an annual permit rather than a six-month permit and just have people good for the year. Uh, we have events that take place throughout the year. If you get in the middle of the year, you're going to, it's going to fall off and you're going to have to renew. I don't see any harm in having someone not have to renew, but rather be locked in for the entire year. Second comment is if you think we're burdensome, take a look at what the Bureau of State College asks. They, they want your firstborn as, as a down payment.
I don't know what they do in People's Choice or the, or the Arts Fest.
But the, the Arts Festival is a totally different scoped project.
That's a nonprofit organization.
Yeah, tribal 1C, so.
But those people, those people are okay to go there, but they can't come down here unless you're.
Well, I, I kind of, I agree with what, what Bruce just said. And, and, and I think that, and then the other thing I think that, that sounds like is we need to be consistent. If we're going to do it with like Watson's and stuff, then really we should be doing it for Memorial Day.
Bruce's suggestion of, of the packet, I think, is a good starting education point and.
So why don't you, why don't you look at that stuff and come back to us, uh, for us, if, if we need to make a.
And maybe the other municipalities have that.
Yeah.
Todd, yeah, Todd and I will look into that. Todd's done a lot of research.
Let's move on here to the next thing. We need to get rolling here. We're, we've got a lot more stuff here tonight. Okay, next on the agenda was, oh, this is, uh, Resolution 2205, the Act 530. Okay, next on the agenda was, oh, this is, uh, Resolution twenty-two oh five, the Act five thirty-seven Facilities Plan, what we had the public meeting on earlier. Um, so I guess I'm gonna open, just open that up if I can get a motion.
I'll, I'll make that motion because we've talked about this at the, the Resiliency Committee.
I, I have a motion.
We're comfortable with, with moving it forward.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Is that all?
We have a second.
Is it all inside the borough?
Yes, this is all inside the borough, and it's, it's, it really is updating what's there.
I'm just surprised.
They're, they're gonna make it bigger, do they have?
I'm just surprised it had to go through Act five thirty-seven.
Its issue is inundation of residents from Buckout Street, Flowing East, and the high rises that have been built.
Oh, yeah.
Those, those shorelines were not built for seven or eight high rises.
Work, work on, work on Calder Alley in the summertime, and you'll know there's a failure down there.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's the big thing, and I, and I don't, like I said, I don't see anything there that, they're, they're doing it. I think they're paying for it, so.
And a lot of, a lot of the utility lines above and the falls are going underground.
Yes, yeah, they're also, yeah, they're also doing utilities.
So I made that motion, sir.
Okay, and he seconded. So I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, next on is our banking services for the township.
So after First National Bank decided to close their Bollesburg branch, the board directed staff to explore banking options for the township. I met with representatives from Kish Bank and Jersey Shore State Bank about our banking needs. The Assistant Vice President at Kish used to work at First National Bank's Bollesburg branch and is very familiar with the township and its needs. Township currently has a loan for our maintenance facility through Jersey Shore. Uh, we did tell First National Bank that we were soliciting proposals for banking services. They indicated, they understood why we were doing that, and also offered us assistance if we decided to move our accounts. Like, they didn't act like they wanted us to stay. Um, the proposals from both banks are included in the agenda packet. I did review them with Finance Director Dwight Miller, who noted they're very similar to what First National Bank is offering us, and there were just a couple of things we wanted to point out. Um, first, on the fees, First National Bank charges fees for deposits from other banks, ACH, transfers, reporting, and remote check scanning. The fees vary based on the usage in a given month and are offset by the balances in our money market account. In 2021, we paid a hundred and fifty dollars. Jersey Shore State Bank's proposal indicates they will waive all the fees associated with our accounts as long as we keep a minimum of two thousand dollars in our money market account, which is not a problem. Uh, Kish Bank proposes a monthly digital banking fee of twenty dollars per month. Uh, the branch locations, First National Bank and Kish Bank are just up the street on South Atherton Street in Hills Plaza. Jersey Shore has a branch on North Atherton Street, uh, down by the Starbucks across from Wegmans. They also have a branch in Center Hall, which is probably actually closer for us than going to North Atherton.
And depositing new ones at all.
Yes. Um, we don't do a ton of in-person transactions, basically because we have a remote check scanner. It's the off chance we need to get petty cash or maybe have to take a, a check up to the bank, so it's not a huge consideration. Um, a couple of other things, all of the banks offer remote desktop deposit. Uh, this allows us to scan checks and deposit them without ever leaving the office. On the township side of things, Dwight Miller actually does that for any checks that we get in for tax certifications or, um, other random checks that we get in from folks. He deposits them straight from his desk in State College. Bridget, when the taxes are coming in, at the height of tax season, Bridget's scanning and doing four or five batches a day with the taxes that are coming in and they're remote deposited right away. Um, we did look at, uh, the interest rates. The only interest rates we're really interested in are for the money market account because the money market account is where we take, when the tax money will start coming in here in another couple of weeks, we deposit those tax funds into the money market account, and then we make periodic transfers, like our savings account, out of that through the year to pay our bills. Uh, we're currently earning point one three percent on our money market account at First National Bank. Uh, Kish Bank's rate would be point oh three percent, and Jersey Shore's rate is point two oh percent for the first ninety days, and they said that because the rates are so low.
Point two percent?
Yeah, point two. Because they're so low right now, they're trying to review them after ninety days to see if they can adjust them a little higher. Um, we do provide accounting services to the Bollesburg Fire Company. Fire Company's accounts are over at First National Bank. Um, we'll still be able to transfer funds in and out of our fire protection account into their account for them, no problem. Um, it's just that there'll be a little bit more of a lag time. Right now, the funds are available same day. This, under this proposal, they'd be next day.
Why would they be a lag time?
It'll just be.
Oh, if we went to a bank other than First National?
Yes, yep. Um, so if you're so inclined to move, and I know that this was a, a point of contention for some of you, um, I, I really think we should go to Jersey Shore if we're gonna move. They, you know, their president got on the call, like, she got on Zoom with us because she had to be at a funeral and couldn't come down that day, and told us how much she wanted us to be a part of their company. They've done great things for us with our loan. They've been fantastic to deal with, with that. They have a better interest rate. Um, and they're more of a community-type field bank. Kish is a little bit bigger of a bank. Their interest rates are a little concerning. They have a little more fees. And like I said, First National Bank, Mike Shuey, who's our contact there, has always been nice, and he's a great guy, but literally when I emailed him and said, hey, we're shopping our banking proposal, he said, I understand, I'll help you move if you change your mind.
He was in the meeting here, wasn't he?
No, no, he wasn't here.
All right, well, let, let's get the ball rolling. I'll take a motion if anybody wants to make a motion. If we have no motion, are you just doing anything?
I will suggest that the reason that we brought this up, we no longer have a oblig-, or, or loyalty to Danny Banks, is that we don't have a branch here anymore. So we don't have, and that was, we should live with them, but they moved their branch out, so we have no loyalty, and I thought they should shop around for a better, uh, or more advantageous program. If, if your recommendation is, uh, Kish?
Jersey.
Jersey, then I'll, I'll go along with that.
Well, you're gonna make a motion? That's a good question. Okay. So I have a motion to go to, to go to Jersey Shore. You're seconding the motion. I got another second from Australia, so we should take the Australian.
That doesn't count until Tuesday at noon.
Yeah, he's already late. He's the day late one. Anyway, okay, so any other comments, questions, or anything that we want to add, ask Amy on this?
I've got a question for you before the closure first. I'm trustee with Pliggett. My question is, do we do any cash handling with Pliggett?
Yeah, Pliggett has, we have accounts with Pliggett. That's where our liquid fuels money gets deposited.
Some very much.
We have some fire protection money. We're making horrible interest on Pliggett money right now.
They're not allowed to, they're not allowed to make money.
Well, we just, we just had a big board meeting, so I'm just, I'm bringing that.
Yeah, we have a bunch of accounts with Pliggett.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Oh, just a comment. I mean, they've had good history at Jersey Shore, especially with this loan for the maintenance department, and so, um, it sounds like they really want to do, you know, serve our needs, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll comment, I'll, I'll comment that, um, I, I have noticed Kish Bank does a lot of good, um, charitable work around the region, and so, I mean, I, I appreciate them as being good citizens.
Yes.
I think Jersey Shore kind of matches us in terms of being, you know, small time, you know, but, um, also, um, their rates, you know, when we go out for loans and stuff, their rates always seem to be pretty favorable. And certainly with respect to what we're talking about now, it's very favorable, so I fully support you going with Jersey Shore.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go to the Jersey Shore.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the motion here. I hear no additional comments. All those in favor of moving to Jersey Shore State Bank signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now we're getting down here to the thing. Okay. Okay, the, the, the next thing is the priorities for the, I, I looked at this and I went, what do you, what do you mean that? Who, did, did you do this?
Would you read this to me?
I, I did the big one.
That's why I gave you the big one.
I did that. Where's the big one? Back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the back.
I looked at it and I said, oh, my goodness.
That's, well, that's why, what, it, it was bad on white paper.
I did. Okay, that's the one I did.
I, I was just told, and I was yelled at by the cog that we didn't do this last year, so.
Okay, so let, let's, let's just, I'm just gonna go down through, and I guess we, we'd have to do A, B, or C, correct? A is top, higher priority, B is, yeah, we want to get it done this year, and C is, well, if we get it done, we get it done. If not, we'll move to next year. So everybody understand that.
My overall comment is that I don't have enough background from the Finance Committee to vote on any of these.
Well.
Neither do I.
Well, here's the.
You represent us.
Well, here's, well, I don't know where this comes from, and we, we are, we are, do a important role. To me, uh, this is probably something that should be looked at, and we, if we have time, but to me, the, our, the Finance Committee has one, one role, and that is provide a budget and, and, and control and, and watch the spending of the cog. Uh, if you want to get into all this other stuff, which we probably should, some of it certainly is germane to that, but it just goes on and on, and I don't know how you would.
Number three, discuss potential methods to catalyze private investments from projects approved in the Climate Action and Adoption Plan.
I put C.
I have no idea what that means.
Well, that means they want to spend some of your money.
Yes, I just put C on that one. Well, I could, I'll tell you what I did. We'll get down, and I'll tell you what I did, and you guys can say yes or no.
All of it, A, B, C, all of it?
A, B, C's. I'll tell you what, it said, review funding for the State College Fireman Relief Association to the COGS. I don't know if we have anything in the capital budget. I don't know.
Do that one.
I put a question mark, but I, I would make it C because I don't know.
Well, what happens there is the, the typically, the farmer's relief has paid fifteen percent of, well, I'm, I'm not sure what all, trucks when they buy. No, I don't know how that involves, uh, how that would involve between the farmer's relief and the fire administration. I'm not quite sure.
But my question is, does, does Bollesburg do any of that?
No, no.
So, so that's what I said, from us, it's a C.
It's an A, it's an NA, now that's.
Yeah, NA, okay. Well, I had a question mark on it. Okay, we'll make it NA. Yeah. Okay, discuss the potential methods to catalyze private investment or projects. No, no, I, what Bud just read, I put C on this one, because you know what?
I understand the other.
We had a new committee called the Facilities Committee. We haven't spent a dime in four years, and we got a lot done. So I, they just like to spend money. I said no on that one. Review the allocation of administrative costs to determine if the administrative fund or more components of the administrative fund should be allocated throughout the twenty-five other cog funds, the effect being to transition the administration fund to an, you know what, that's a financial, let's move the money around. I think we leave it the way it is. We put no on that one.
So C on that one?
I put a C on that.
C on that one, okay.
Yeah, because, you know, all they're, all they're saying is, well, instead of looking at administrative number, we're gonna put it in every little fund, and you won't see, well, how do we know if administration's?
It's like a shared cost issue.
Yeah, how we know if administration's out of, out of whack if they've separated throughout the whole, the whole budget?
It's a bean counter thing.
Yeah, exactly. Discuss funding on cog capital budget, especially the, the Millmore Marsh Nature and Library Pool.
I put, I put an A on that.
I put an A on that.
That is, that is automatic. That shouldn't even go.
A, yes, I put an A on that.
That shouldn't even go in there. That's what we do.
We've got it, the Facilities Committee has that coming at you. Discuss if there is a desire to update agreements with the Center County Library Federation. Areas of impact could include planning aids, I see, I, I don't know this. I made it a B because I wasn't really sure.
That sounds like a B to me.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'm feeling a B.
Okay, okay.
Um, I'm not sure anything could be down there, but we can put it on a B if you want.
Monitor the financial status in the code agencies.
Can we put an A plus on that?
I would put an A plus, but it's, it's not gonna matter, so I put B on it.
That's an automatic.
Okay, okay, we'll make it an A then. Okay, we're gonna make it an A.
Cog IT.
Re-, receive and review the raw, results of the cog IT study. I put a B because they want to spend money.
Exactly, they want to create their own IT department.
I thought that was done already.
Well, they want to look at the impact now.
Oh, okay.
They want to.
Financial, they want to pay for it now.
That's already on our schedule.
So B?
Yeah, I gave it a B. Address long-term plan, oh, I'm sorry, did you say something, Bruce?
I just, that's not even an action item.
Yes, okay, good.
It's a review.
Address long-term planning as the community continues to grow and the demand for services continue to increase before certain changes, such as the possibility of adding paid firefighters. What'd you say?
We have nothing to do with that.
Okay. Anybody want to?
Arising causes a fundamental shift in budget process. Is, is that a standalone statement, that last part?
I, I guess.
Arise, arise causing a fundamental shift in the budget process.
They want, this is what they want to pay for firefighters.
Is that an NA again?
I guess.
That's an NA.
Let's, let's see if it's an NA.
Okay.
Okay, COGS should investigate the impacts of changing the coal merit calculations to achieve consistency with its municipal party. Did I put C on that one?
C or, yeah, that makes me.
This is, no, no, no.
That is, that's automatically done every budget.
I know it is.
Yeah, they always ask us.
Yeah, they want to, they want to go to, they want to, nevermind. COGS should complete a fleet manager plan and share its findings with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, sure.
I'm gonna say it's an A.
A, A, okay. Okay, we got an A on that one. COGS should develop a fund balance policy. I put A because we're supposed to do that.
We're still doing it. It's, it's.
They've been talking about it for five years.
Yes, it's in there.
COGS Administration should complete a strategic plan and share.
No.
We already said that. I think they're already doing it.
No.
I think they're already doing it, aren't they?
There's, there's, there's.
I don't know that. I don't know what the purpose of it would be.
So what do you want? We'll make it a C?
Well, I don't.
Well, give it a B. It'd be kind.
Okay, it's a B. We gave it a cog B.
Did you say give it a B to be kind?
I don't even know what it is.
Okay, update finance system, payroll, accounting, et cetera, C.
Isn't that related to the IT?
No, that's an A because, because we're hiring a new employee. That's an A.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
I made it, I made it a C.
You're hiring a new employee.
Okay. Then why are we doing this if they already know? Review, review the standard cog formulas and other non-usage-based formulas used to allocate municipal shares.
This is something that was brought up, uh, library and, um, the li-, well, library, especially per usage, it's a different formula, the fire's a different formula. Uh, they can look at it, but I, I think it works well the way it is.
I, I put C. Oh, I put a C.
I don't care where you put it.
But C?
Okay, I put a C. Okay, Amy, you put down there. Improve planning communications surrounding the hiring of staff. The desire to create a five-year staffing plan similar to the five-year capital improvement plan, NA, no, C, down to the bottom. Well, well, you're telling me you're gonna say we're gonna hire somebody in fi-, you don't know when you're gonna hire somebody.
But, but what they're doing now, and you do know when you're gonna hire somebody, because for example, when we did our strategic plan for our maintenance department and we looked at our long-term needs, we identified the need to hire another staff member in that plan, and that was 2015. The problem, I think, and, and where they're trying to go with this, right, is like, we always get concerned because they just decide they gotta hire a finance person, and they gotta hire a human resources person, then they gotta hire someone to carry the books for the finance person. Like, they just make these things up, and it's.
That's why I don't, that's why I put a C.
But that's why if they have a, a plan, like, if they do some kind of strategic plan that looks at their departments going, oh, okay, well, in finance, we really need one more person.
Will, will, will you burden for a B?
Okay, we're, we're gonna make it B. We'll go B.
D.
Yeah, okay. The next one is definitely a C. Improve planning communications surrounding the request for studies. I know you don't want that one.
I don't like that.
That's a C.
Do a C, okay.
Yeah, and then a request in conjunction with the creation of a fund balance policy to review the current billing structures at COGS, especially as it permits to, to projects and our positions. But they may not begin. That's yours. I put an A on that.
That's you and I, Amy.
I put an A on that one.
That's Amy.
Three A.
Three A, that's Amy.
Okay, A plus, three A.
Amy and I got that far.
I wrote triple A.
Okay. Request to provide justification on the transfer from the refuge budget to the planning budget for management services. I have no idea what that.
Somebody requested something?
I put C down because I have no idea what they want to do there.
Request to provide.
You know what's going on there, anybody?
Refuge budget.
Why is this, if somebody?
The planning, the planning department.
They're gonna take money from the refuge budget to the planning department because their, the planning department is doing something there, I guess, that they need management numbers.
It's the recycling program. Recycling program.
We do share, we share money from other funds, too, like, we've shared.
Well, you want to move that one up the ladder?[1667.34]
NA, NA.
I, I don't understand this. If.
Okay, what do you want to make it?
WTF.
What?
What?
What was that?
WTF.
CF.
He, no, he said WTF.
Oh, yeah. Okay, 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 okay. Thank you, Bruce.
We, we could probably do that to some of these others also.
Give, give, Danny wants to make it a B.
We'll make that a B.
Uh, WBF.
A request, a request that revenue from Central Region Parks and Rec program be dis, disaggregated and reported by municipality. Further, it requested a new software acquired by the parking rec to evaluate, determine whether it can track and produce this data. I put no, no, no.
This is coming from Ferguson Township.
I said C.
Read this again now.
Okay, in other words, they want to request that revenue from, the, the revenue from parking rec.
Yes.
Instead of it being, here's a swimming pool, it's going to be disaggregated. It'll say Harris Township Swimming Pool, Ferguson Swimming Pool.
Oh, no, no.
So, yeah, we said no on that.
That's a Ferguson Township thing.
That sounds like it to me.
Okay, here's another one. Okay, Bud, this, we're in your realm again, Bruce. Potential budget a, amendment. Once the park governance committee is organized, the members of the committee will begin discussion, discussing the need for a facilitator and/or outside park and rec expert to add in the update to the park governance structure and associated documents. Should the parks governance committee deem a facilitator or other outside experts to be necessary, they should obtain a cost for those services and request the finance committee to consider a budget amendment to make recommendations regarding the amendment to the general forum. They want to hire somebody to tell them what they want to do. I put C, no.
They're already, uh, put out bids for project managers.
Well, I put, that's for the park.
This sniffs of a Ferguson Township.
I said no, C on that bad boy.
That, that's just getting way out in front of where we are.
Yeah.
We're, we're not at that point now.
Okay, discussion regarding policies for acceptance of credit cards for the new tracer software program being implemented by, for the code agency effective January one, twenty thirty. I put A because, you know, if you're out on the job site and, and a contractor needs to buy a permit and they can do it right there in the site.
I thought we did that already.
What discussion would that take?
Yeah, I, I don't understand that.
I thought, I thought, I thought an inspector could accept a credit card.
Well, I guess they.
Can we put, we put the machines in the cars, all the cars.
So, we want to leave that, what do you want to leave that C?
I, I want to know why we're discussing that.
Let's put Y. W, WHY.
WTF.
Okay, this next one.
These are Y's.
This is, this is FUBAR.
Yeah, this is the next one. I put, this is, this is another one I.
This whole thing's FUBAR.
Staff is recommending a state of the fire department report be given to the finance committee sometime during the twenty twenty-two prior to the changeover in agency director.
That's Steve.
I know he's retired.
This, this is an NA. We don't participate in the fire program.
All right, good. That's it.
Well, you, I'm proud of you guys.
Oh, my God.
Why is that?
I'll, I'll, I'll communicate these back to the COG.
Well, start with that WTF thing.
Oh, no, then Eric will accuse me of an ethics violation again.
Okay.
Put it on our shoulders.
All right.
It's either Snafu or FUBAR, which is a.
The next thing. We're getting there, guys. We're getting to the end. Uh, this is the, this is the thing that Bud and I put together, and I think Bruce added a, added a revision to the bottom, which I think, I think hit, hit real well. But we would like to forward this on to the, uh, COG director and who else? Rich Frank, the president. Huh?
Goes through executive.
Well, we send it to Rich Frank and.
To Eric Norman.
The executives are president, right?
Yes, chairman.
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 So, basically, I'll, I'll, I'll read it, what it says, if you want. Uh, we realize there has been a lot of email correspondence about our concerns over how the actions on Whitehall Regional Park financing were held. We want to make it clear that our concerns are not with that specific action. Rather, we want to address our concerns about how the COG committees interact with the general forum and how decisions are ultimately made. Over the last year, there have been at least two incidences where the committees took unilateral action without bringing an item to the general forum. We are concerned that this usurps longstanding COG policy of bringing committee items forward for discussion by the body as a whole. We feel this does not promote transparency and is not, it does more to further divide the member municipalities. The recent establishment, established policy of communications is a step in the right direction. However, we ask that the COG continue to review its internal policies to ensure that committees are following established procedures and that major decisions are brought before the general forum rather than let be subset of members, membership speaking for everyone. Oh, I didn't read that very, rather than letting a subset of membership speak for everyone. So, that was kind of what we, you know, we're not looking, we don't disagree with the, the decisions. What we're saying is that, that we have a policy and procedure. We need to follow it.
Well, I would, I would counter and say that the two instances that we're talking about did follow procedure.
Well, I, I'm not sure that.
Did not follow procedure. Did.
They did.
No, that's why this, that's why I brought this up. They did not follow procedure.
I think they did.
What procedure? Because you have, when a finance committee makes a recommendation, you decide not to forward that to the general forum. What procedure do they follow?
The two instances, instances we're talking about are not finance committee instances.
Oh, that's the one I'm talking about. That's one of the ones I'm talking about. The finance committee, and when they had a joint meeting with finance, uh, we made, we.
Facilities.
We made a motion to ask the general forum to go to the general forum to ask.
I forget what it was about it and we're.
Well, it was basically that we, we wanted.
Option two, option three, and what else?
Oh, yeah, option two, option two.
And we wanted to consider, our motion was that we wanted to send it, forward it, and this was a joint committee, that we wanted it forwarded to the general forum for, uh, we wanted to do it to.
For discussion in a bid.
Option two, and if option two failed, it was right into motion, then option three would be allowed, would, 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 would continue. That was what the motion was.
I understand the circumstance between those two things. I do that. I understand that. Especially the letter, there was an urgency. They, they, I guess it was an argument you could, you couldn't have taken time to general forum. What discussion would have been, I don't know. But what I'm concerned is that any of the committees, all those committees, they, they do their programs, they do their work. We say, okay, committee, make this recommendation. The committee makes a recommendation. The committee votes to forward that on to, the executive committee to bring it up to the general forum for discussion. And I don't know that the general, that the executive committee should have the, the privilege of deciding whether that goes on to the general forum or not. That's, that's what bothers me. These two, you write down, these two are altogether strange.
But the one, the, the other one, I think, was a better example. The one, well, the one that, that we did, the, the letter that they wrote to Penn State. Yeah, that, when that did come to general forum after, there was a lot of.
There was some comments about that.
That were either for or against it, but there was a lot of discussion on that. It was after the fact. So, that's the point. It's got to come to general forum before we can release anything.
Well, I was the recipient of the response from the university.
I, well, I know that, but I'm just saying, that, that's our point.
Well, this, this is very simple. I mean, it, it should be simple courtesy that when a committee does some work, does a study or writes a recommendation, the committee approves it, and then it has to go through, through the, to the, uh, executive committee, and they should put that on the board for discussion. Whether it's voted up, voted out, or sent back to committee. That's, those are one of the three options, and, and I'm concerned that that has set a precedence that they could say, well, if somebody on that, two people were maybe on, on the executive committee, say, ah, that's a bad idea, I'm not. I, I just think that that's a bad precedent to do that.
Bruce has his hand up.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Good, Bruce.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I think we're, I think the COG is already headed in the right direction. And, but they need to make sure that, that it's clear what that direction, you know, what those discussion, or what those directions that policy is and, and it is adhered to. Um, frankly, the first paragraph in the second, the first sentence in the second paragraph, it's not committees, it's the executive committee. I, I don't see committees, I don't see the general committees taking unilateral action, um, as being an issue here.
Oh, yeah.
It's one of the responsibilities of the executive committee. Um, some of it's spelled out in the new policy. Um, is something so urgent that they need to bypass the general forum? I think that should be a pretty high bar to get over. Um, you know, and, you know, and, and frankly, I, I, while we're saying we're moving beyond that letter, um, to me, if that letter went out from the executive committee, that's who should, it should have come out from. It shouldn't come from the general forum because I wasn't asked my opinion.
And you run the executive committee?
No.
Not, not what needs to.
Oh, oh, no, no.
So, basically, what you're saying is you just want to insert executive committee there on that first sentence. The two incidents were, where, where the executive committee took unilateral, is that what you want to change, Bruce?
I, that's the way I see it. That's where the.
I have no problem with that. Do you have any problem? Anybody else have any problem?
The, the, the.
Makes the most sense.
The committee's.
It is where the blockade happens.
Yeah, the committee's plural is not the correct word.
Yeah, I took the S off the committee too, just the executive committee. All right.
Yeah, then target is to exec.
So, can I get a motion to forward this on to the?
Sure, that's fine.
You, you making that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a second? Go ahead. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Amy gets a vote somewhere along the line.
He's giving, he's giving Amy votes over here, guys. Okay, we have a resolution for the destruction of records that happens every year, uh, Resolution twenty-two oh six. I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-two oh six.
You, you have it.
I, do I get a second?
You bet.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
A question for, how, how is this done?
There's a records retention schedule that we have to follow.
Then how's it physically done?
Physically, how do these get destroyed?
Oh, Deb calls Iron Mountain, or if they're not around, she calls somebody else.
A paper shredding company?
And then they show up in the back parking lot and they shred, 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 and they disappear, and they pay them a bill.
Sure, it's, it's a thing we watch and they just move it. Okay.
And they give us a certificate of destruction that we file.
Someone does that around town. It's open to the public someplace.
A lot of places do that.
Oh, yeah, we have a car fire up there. That's right. It's up on Mountain, isn't it?
Yes, yeah. We, but we have to have a certificate of destruction.
Is there a charge for this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's not much.
By pound or something of a volume or?
No idea, but it's not much.
We do it every year.
Yes.
Okay.
Proceed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We destroy the evidence.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Okay, we have one to throw in there. We're going to throw this one, a number one on the manager's report.
Yes.
Uh, that would be, uh, the, go ahead, Amy.
We got a quote from Hillside Construction from Aaronsburg, Pennsylvania to remove the pole shed. The quote was for three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. This person also gave us a quote. We have to change the roof over at the pavilion in Blue Spring Park, and he gave us a quote of a thousand bucks to do that. Like, this guy's.
New roof.
Nice and cheap to put, yeah, to put the roof on. We'll buy the materials. We'll put it on.
Twenty years.
Anyway, um, we'll be responsible for the disposal cost. We did tell this contractor that he can salvage any of the lloyd that he might want. Uh, we're not sure much of that wood is actually salvageable from the pole shed. So, if you're okay with the price, I need a, he wants to do this this winter. I need a motion. And then I did tell the township engineer that we need to get the survey done and the plan done for the back parking lot, and hopefully have that presented to you at the March meeting.
Okay, so.
Well, for.
So, basically, we're saying it's going to be thirty-seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Plus.
Plus disposal fee.
Tipping fee. Plus disposal, which we'll pay.
Yeah, tipping fee, yeah.
We'll get a dumpster and haul.
Okay, I was going to say that, or we can haul down.
We, we are responsible for the dumpster?
Yes.
So, it's going to go to the transfer station?
Yes.
Because we have demolition efforts going in the center region. Now they're taking them to coal mines, and we got to make sure we can track that stuff.
Legally?
No.
Oh.
We're going to follow the rules.
Okay.
Okay.
Really?
Coal mines.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion and, or move the motion, and while doing this, I first thought that typically when you do this, you make a lot, if they find usable lumber to keep for themselves, they, we get reimbursed that. But I don't think there's anything, let's say, even on that building, it's worth any money, so.
It's slightly used.
Yeah, I think so. Typically, once they, if they get to keep some lumber, then we get reimbursed that. But I don't think there's anything worth us worrying about, so.
Okay, we also need a second on that motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any more comments or discussion? Australia, you have anything for us?
No, he's looking out the window.
Oh.
He's looking, he's looking for sunshine.
It's eighty-something degrees there.
Here we go. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Oh, you're, you're, you're back. Okay, all right, that's good. Now we're, now we're.
Got a question.
Well, we're going to, we're managing this report right now, so go ahead.
Can I move down the keys and still sign it in?
Okay, go ahead.
Number seven, uh, what value for services do we get for four hundred and eight dollars per month for hydrant?
So, I.
Yeah.
Mike is great, our rep to the water authority. I asked Mike, because I'm concerned because these fees go up every freaking year. And I talked to Brian Heiser about it two years ago, and Brian said, well, it's not just the maintenance cost, like, it's the overall cost of having the hydrant. And I'm like, so, you, you should split that out because the maintenance cost on a hydrant is maybe fifty bucks a year or something. So, Mike did, and I have to follow up with him, but he did contact, he sent me an email. He contacted some other authorities around here, because remember, he had worked for the state.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he contacted some other authorities, and our rate is super high compared to these other authorities. But, and we're seeing this with our friends at Cata right now and our friends elsewhere, these authorities think they have unilateral power to do what they want to do, but the, the fact of the matter is, this four hundred and eight dollars per hydrant, we didn't know this was going up. We don't have four hundred and eight dollars per hydrant in our general fund to cover, and the fire hydrant fund to cover this.
Does that include flushing?
Yeah, it includes all, all the maintenance. He, he, I'll have to dig it out. He, Brian Heiser had sent me an email that explained that the actual maintenance of the fu, of the hydrant is low, and then there's the water cost, which should be in the fire hydrant fee, but then there's like other stuff.
I could see if one book offered, we had a refresh the hydrant, but this doesn't talk like that.
No, and like, since two thousand and goodness, maybe nineteen, I mean, these things have jumped from like two hundred something to three hundred something to now four hundred something.
How many do we have, uh, topic?
We didn't know, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, I don't know right now. And that's the other thing. I don't know. We're going to have to, we have to.
Maybe a hundred.
We have to review the fire hydrant tax as part of the, um, taxes for the budget for next year, and then we're going to have to up the fire hydrant fee. Like, right now, it's basically twenty dollars a, a hydrant if you're within seven hundred and fifty feet. We're going to have to like double that.
A couple of years ago, I spoke to the shared cost of fire hydrants. We may need to look at that.
Well, so we did do that. We split the cost, so we pay two quarter, two to three quarters out of the fire hydrant fund and then one quarter out of the general fund. But however, the state of Pennsylvania says you're really not supposed to do that. You'd, it's either all or none. You either pay it all out of your fire hydrant fund, or you pay it all out of your general fund.
Oh.
But most of our township is in the water.
It's an applicable discussion though, with respect to that increase.
Why can't we send a, a, a letter to the, to the water company?
Let's, let's find out.
Asking a breakdown of the cost.
Yes, that's, that's, I don't know about.
We want to see the breakdown of the cost of that maintenance.
Uh, these regulations, but a municipality, not allowed to charge more than it actually costs them.
That's, that's what he said too.
And, and that's a law, that's a law.
There's no profit center in this.
And I don't know if it has to do with u, uh, utilities or not, or, but.
Well, it could be that we're financing something else.
Well, here, well, here's the issue, you're not, we're not allowed to say, okay, you won't park, you park in our parking lot, it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars, it doesn't cost us, so you have to keep the, the actual cost.
Yes.
So I'm curious to see where, how they arrive at that actual cost.
And that's what Mike said, Mike said that there is that law, 'cause he talked with somebody maybe in Lewistown, who was like, oh, yeah, no, there's a law that you cannot be just bilking money out of people.
Right, that's when we go through our fees, we have to make sure our fees are reasonable.
It is no profit center.
Bruce has his hand up.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, um, so, I mean, what happens if we don't pay the fee, or don't pay the increase? I think that we should consult with the other municipalities and speak with a more unified voice on this, this is affecting more than just Harris Township.
Oh, yes. At least, I think it does.
Yeah, it's all of us.
Well, it's interesting that we have about eight or nine water association authorities in the county, it would be useful to know what the Walker Township Water Authority charges, or the, uh.
They have hydrants?
There's a Gulfview Water Authority, there's a Potter Township, Central Hall Water Authority, to get some shared information on what they charge for this.
Is this, is it, this would, would, fire hydrants would come under public safety, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
So why shouldn't I bring that up?
No, it comes under law.
Public safety, first, I'm talking about the fire hydrants, is that, isn't that a public safety?
But not everybody in the cog is under state college borough water authority.
See, there's a half, there's a half moon township water authority.
Well, and Ferguson has their own, they have a private water company.
Um, they don't buy the hydrants, the hydrants are bought by the developer.
I know, a water company.
I can also bring this up with the, the managers, we have a call.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's get some, let's get some research on this, I think we need to.
Share that one.
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay.
Yeah, I did read that one, glad you brought that up, I'd have forgotten about it. Um, and just a quick thing on the, on the village parking committee, I think we're one meeting away from putting meat and potatoes on the plate. I think after, two meetings? Okay, but it's getting close, the parking committee.
Oh, okay.
So we get two servings of meat and two servings of potatoes?
We could, we could very well, I think we're gonna get very little, I think we're gonna get hungry, 'cause, 'cause I think, I, I think the biggest takeaway I've had since the last couple of meetings, since we did the thing with the small area business plan, we did the map, uh, then this last week, we did the, uh, they, they went around and saw what other communities were doing on parking, like communities, I think with those three things, and now we're gonna have something where we're gonna go up and put actual stickers on the maps and stuff.
Oh, you're regular.
I, I think, I think that, I think what people are starting to realize is, our regulations aren't out of, we're not a whack, you know, it is something that we've had.
We knew that before we started the committee, sorry.
Yeah, we did, we did too, but I think it's, I think it's getting to the committee, I think we'll be fine. There are gonna be some things looked at, like shared parking requirements and stuff like that, but I think we're okay.
For that.
Okay, Amy, anything else, anybody have anything else for Amy?
No.
Bruce, you have anything else for Amy?
No, I do not.
Okay, let's move on, then. You have nothing for Amy, but I'm surprised. Okay, vouchers.
He gave me a vote.
Approval of vouchers.
I just don't know when I'm gonna give it to you.
Do I have a motion for approval of vouchers?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a, a motion from Denny?
Hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and seven cents.
And this is for voucher number twenty, twenty-two dash one.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Nigel, we have a second from Australia, too. Okay, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any opposed? Passes. Go, oh, now you have the question.
Twenty-eight, one, zero, zero, Joe Hazel, backflow preventer, is that, is that something about a new maintenance facility?
Inspection, or what is it?
Does that have to do with this tree situation on the diamond?
Not, not, has nothing to do with the tree.
Joe Hazel, ninety-five bucks.
Well, that's, he, they have to be inspected once a year.
Yeah, that's what that was.
Backflow preventers do, Faroe has three of them. They're really, they have to be inspected, the water authority requests that.
Okay.
And we have to give you, it's a form you fill out, ninety bucks, I guess, is about, right?
So that, that applies to this property? Or to the maintenance facility?
Probably the maintenance facility, 'cause he did the work.
Had been there a year, been there a year?
He did the work on it.
I don't know, maybe it was never checked out.
It, it, it struck me as, as strange. Okay, all right, okay, moving on, committee reports. Uh, let's see, Mr. Lord, you get to go first.
Well, um, I'll defer to you for the executive committee.
Well, we didn't, we haven't met yet, we haven't met yet.
Um, I, I'll let you, just let me, let me condense the park, uh, stuff, and the Parks Governors Committee did meet, uh, we have seven voting members, one for each of the participating municipalities, uh, plus, uh, two authority members, we have two non-voting members, uh, at the township, and the school district, we elected Mr. Frank as the chair, Kathy Mattson as the vice chair, uh, going around discussing the object, everybody's general view of the objectives of what this committee should do, there was a large degree of agree, of agreement, and, um, at this point, kinda confident that we're gonna get this done in this calendar year. So, I'll keep you up to date.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, the MPO did not meet, uh, facilities, we've met twice since our last meeting, uh, first one was obviously an organizational meeting, not a lot went on there, the second meeting, we, we did the, uh, the lease, the fire protection lease, we, we reviewed that and sent that on, but the one thing that, uh, we had a report of our overall facilities con, condition assessment process, uh, how we, how we're looking at those, and how that's gonna finance the, the CIP, and, and what that cost is gonna be, Mr. Brungard has done his fabulous job on that. Bottom line is, the average for about the next four or five years, for all our facilities, the fire companies, the pools, everything is about one point four million a year for maintenance and, and updates.
That's ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars for us.
Yeah, well, it's, it's one point four million a year, but, and, and when I looked at it, I thought about it, but it's, uh, you're looking, you're looking at about a twenty-seven, thirty million dollar budget, it's like five percent, and most, if you look at the formula for most, uh, maintenance, it's about ten or fifteen is what they recommend.
How much, a hundred million a year? A million a year?
One point four million a year.
One point four, I mean.
Yeah, one point four million a year.
One half million a year.
Yes, roughly.
And that is for ev, for every year?
Now, no, that's for the next four or five years, I believe, and after that, it, it should drop.
And we're gonna be reporting on that.
Because a lot of this one point four million is, is, maintenance has been deferred over the years, this is to catch it up.
Are we gonna get, well, I guess finance committee will.
Yeah, the finance will get, what I'm saying is, when it comes to these, the maintenance and what the facilities committee's been working on since day one, we're hoping that we're getting to the end where you'll have those numbers every year.
Will that build into a, uh, maintenance reserve somewhere?
Yes, that's, that's also, that's all for, that's also for replacement of, of facilities and, and.
Non, non-vehicle stuff, this is.
Non-vehicles, this is, this is all facilities.
That will be divided up into different, uh, uh, categories.
Yeah, right, right now, the first thing we worked on, Denny, was all the, the buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the physical, physical plant, so once we have that physical plant done, which we have it pretty much done now.
Because if you don't take care of them, they depreciate quickly.
Exactly, so, but there's, there'll be some other things, but, but like I said, I thought five percent was not a bad number to start with, there's gonna be some years where it's higher and some where it's lower, but that's the average.
And hope you don't have emergencies or major breakdowns.
And that's always gonna, that's always in there.
Of swimming pool pumps and things.
That's always in there.
Or, swimming pools are.
But I, I think the facilities committee is, it, it, it has, from, from inception till today, it's, it's done a fabulous job, in my opinion, that, with the staff and, and all the things that we've done and looked at from where we started, we, we were talking about that the other day.
Yeah, Lu was a good job.
When we started it, well, even before Lu, we started with like, what do we do? We didn't even know where to go, and, and, and it's gone a long ways.
Well, the hospitals lost, but it's cog's game.
Yes, and by the way, the other thing that's coming.
The hospitals lost, but it's cog's game, 'cause Lu was with the hospital, oh.
But the other thing that's coming, um, is, is that, and I don't know who it was, but somebody lost a maintenance guy, I don't know if it was the library, or, or cog, or somebody lost a maintenance guy, or, or a janitor, or whatever, now we're, we have a, Lu's been tasked with looking at, uh, a study of how much does it cost for us to have outside services, and how much is it gonna cost for us to hire people to do janitor maintenance?
I don't think, I don't think, I think that was directed to him during the budget session, that, that look at the library.
It stepped up in priority, because they've lost some people.
Do we do any internal maintenance?
Uh, well, like.
Do the fire stations being hit or?
Yes, no, they don't, uh, I think it's.
Oh, the parks and rec guys do take care of the parking lot, and things like that, they do take care of some stuff, yeah.
But college, or the borough does, it's glow library, I think they do the fire stations too.
They've done that for a long time.
No, somebody else does fire, maybe that's who quit, yes.
Whatever, whatever, somebody quit, so now they got an issue, so that is being looked at. Okay, the state college area connector PEL study, I would like to spend a lot of time on that, but I'm not going to, because it's, it's not, there's a lot coming, there's another, the next public hearing is, uh, April fifth, I believe, and it will be up at Calvary Baptist Church, starting at like three in the afternoon to eight, uh, they have taken all the comments from the last open house, incorporated them in, and hopefully we'll have a whole new updated look at, at alternatives.
Has the group committee between Harris and College?
We did that today.
Potter and Spring and Pendot?
That was today.
You had that today?
We did that today, it was about, what, two and a half hours?
Two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours.
Did everyone appear?
Yes, we had, we had representative from everybody, uh, we had a lot of good input, lot of good, lot of good information from Pendot, they gave us a lot more of the, the road study of how much, what the, the traffic was, and you're looking at, what, twenty-two thousand cars, it's coming.
Was that in Clearfield?
No.
No, it wasn't.
They changed their man who came here, did they?
Yep, they went to the Bolzberg Fire Company. Okay, the final one I have is public safety, again, the one we had in January was, uh, re, or, uh, re-set up, we, we voted everybody in, we did that, reorganization. The one we had on February, we did have some issues there, um, we did some reappointments on there, but the, the, the couple things that I had on the public safety, uh, that I think we need to, to be aware of, that we're probably gonna get some questions on, the one is the elementary schools, the, the state college area school district is on there, Mountain Inn, Park Forest, and Grayse woods are bursting at the seams, and they will be doing redistricting, moving kids to other schools that are smaller, we may get some feedback on that, but I don't know. The other thing that, that was, uh, done is the emergency management legislative breakfast will be at the Ramada Inn on March tenth from eight to eleven, you, I think I sent you guys all a, a thing on that, if you want to attend that, you, you can do that, it's not just center county, that's the area.
It's theme, what, what's the theme of this?
Uh, they, they do it, I guess, every year, it's the, uh, it's, it's, they have a legislative breakfast, they try to push, uh, legislation that, that they want to get done for the different, different communities.
Under the jurisdiction of whom?
They're, they're gonna have the state representatives and people, people there.
Oh, okay, I read it, that was.
In fact, that's why I wrote the thing, we wrote the letter, because we did an invite, 'cause we weren't getting anything back from Carrie and Jake and those guys.
Okay, I wasn't sure who was.
So we're trying to get them there, so they can.
Who the leader of that thing was.
But that's pretty much what it is, and also, the code administration on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, is having a, uh, the new code, the twenty-fifteen, twenty-eighteen code, they're gonna be putting it out on that day, it's an all-day, eight-hour thing, costs you fifty bucks to go, uh, but if you want to go to that, you need to call into code office and do that, but that's all that happened in there.
That is for contractors?
It could be, it's anybody, Bud, anybody.
Well, I mean, general design.
Generalist contractors, designers, architects, you know, but yes.
People that deal with it every day.
Phew, I think I'm done. Human resources, Mr. Wilson.
All right, mine's gonna be really quick, yes, uh, we met twice, we met in January,